I'm going to read the openings. I'm going to read the opening statement now. And let's see. Just give me a second. I lost the cursor online. Okay, there we go. Okay. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on April 27, 2022 at 7:30 PM pursuant to section 13 of the open public meetings act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the packet town topics, the times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the clerk of Princeton on April 22, 2022 and has been posted to the municipal website, Meetings. Pursuant to executive order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that, excuse, notice. Gosh. Sorry. I lost. Notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted to the Princeton packet town topics, the times, and was filed with the clerk of Princeton. The clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton packet town topics, the times, Trentonian, Comcast media, and by filing a copy thereof with the clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on all window doors at the municipal complex. Okay, that was the opening statement. I get Claudia, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Chen. Ms. Coulson.
Here.
Davich.
Here.
Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Schreiber.
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum. Stein.
Here.
Ms. Donna.
Yes.
Chairman Cohen.
Here. Um, a question, we, we, um, we received the revised agenda mid afternoon today and added to it was 238 Mount Lucas Road.
No, I think it was 420.
Yes. Okay, it was 420, but the bottom line is we just got it this afternoon.
Correct. I, I, I think the reason the agenda was revised is because this application was carried from your last meeting.
Yes.
Because this new information came in so late. I believe the recommendation from staff is going to be that it be carried tonight so that you have an opportunity and the public has an opportunity to see the new documentation that's been provided. So that's why it's on there because you had in fact carried it from the last meeting, but, but that's my understanding and Derek, please correct me if, if I'm incorrect, but.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree 100%. I, I don't think we should hear it this evening, so that's fine. Okay. All right, so we're going to, that'll be carried to what meeting, the 27th May? Was it the May meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
That is the 25th.
25th, and we do have a special meeting in between.
Correct.
But this will go to the 25th, okay. All right, so we have, we have a group of resolutions here. So let's start going through those. The first one is resolutions is 238 Mount Lucas Road. It is in your packet and if, if, if everybody is familiar with it and read it, if somebody would like to comment on it or make a motion.
Just one revision I'd like to note in the roll call vote. Um, my mistake, Ms. Dana was at the meeting, she just was not able to vote because she was the second alternate that night, so I just wanted that one changed.
That's fine. Okay. Would anybody, I'm sorry?
I just, thank you.
You're welcome. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Second. Okay.
Eve Coulson.
Who's second, I'm sorry.
Eve Coulson.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
No, not, not. Not Donna though. She couldn't vote on this, she was present but could not vote because she was second alternative.
Mr. Tenenbaum, was he there?
No.
I needed one, Mr. Cohen, so that's two out.
Oh, okay. All right, then I stand corrected. Okay.
Ms. Donna?
Yeah, so I gather I voted.
I gather.
I thought it seemed familiar.
Lot of cases lately.
Which resolution are we on now? Are we on 63?
We're going to go to, our next one is 63 Van Dyke Road, its file number Z 21-145 block 4502 lot 1. So again, it's in your packet. If somebody'd like to comment on it or make a motion?
So we're just going to have the same clarification that Ms. Dana voted, so she was not absent, she was present.
Right, it was Mr. Cohen and Mr. Tenenbaum that were absent.
On this one, it says on this 63 Van Dyke. I voted on it.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's.
You were absent, I think.
You were absent.
Okay.
That's my mistake.
Okay, so I didn't vote on it. All right, good. All right, no problem. So if somebody would still like to comment on it or make a motion?
Make a motion to accept it.
Thank you.
Second, Stephen Schreiber.
Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Okay, our next case, our next resolution is file number Z 19-761 16 Madison Street, block 2802, lot 59. And again, the, it is in your packet and if somebody would like to comment on it, amend it, or just vote on it, please.
Make a motion that we accept it.
We have a second?
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Stephen Schreiber.
Claudia?
Okay, our next one.
We need a roll call, sorry.
I need, one second. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, our next one is case number Z 22-173 508 Mount Lucas, block 4204, lot 4. Comments, questions, or motion, please?
I'm over Provo, Michael Floyd.
Thank you.
Welcome.
George, I think you might be muted, muted. I can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
You can't hear me? Now, George Stein, I can hear you, Michael, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second Jim Davich.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next resolution is case Z 22-176 178 Linden Lane, block 7302, lot 10.
I'm over Provo, Michael Floyd.
Thank you.
Second, Stephen Schreiber.
Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay. Next case, Z 22-177 198 Linden Lane, block 7302, lot 15.
I'm over Provo, Floyd.
Thank you.
I second it, Eve Coulson.
Thank you.
Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Our last resolution is case Z 22-171 343 Snowden Lane, block 5705, lot 10.01.
I'm over Provo, Michael Floyd.
Thank you.
Second, Stephen Schreiber.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein? Chairman Cohen?
Yes, sorry, I was just excited. Okay, so, and now on to the applications. Our first one is case Z 20-875 420 Mount Lucas Road, block 4201, lot 15. Karen, is everything in order?
Well, now remember, it is in order, Steve, this is the one that was carried from the last meeting. And I think a few minutes ago, the board had just said they want to carry it to May 25.
Okay.
To allow.
76 Prince William Court, right?
Yeah, so that, that's the one we beginning.
Okay, so this one will be carried to the 25th of May.
Yep.
No problem. Okay. All right, so, all right, now, our next case is Z 22-155 76 Prince Williams Court, block 7701, lot 14. Karen, is everything in order for that one? Everybody seems to be frozen, not everybody. Karen?
He is, yep.
Yeah, Karen's frozen. Oh, sorry, Karen, we couldn't, you were frozen there for a little.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I wonder what was going on. I had indicated, a few minutes ago, the board had advised that that was acceptable to them to carry 420 Mount Lucas Road.
Yes.
May 25th, so you're beginning tonight with 76 Prince William Court. And the application is in order, the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you very much. Derek, would you summarize your memo, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Emmanuel's.
I'm going to swear you in tonight, Derek, for the evening. You swear, and actually, is Elizabeth?
She's not on yet.
She's not on yet, okay.
On the screen.
Derek, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Evening, Emmanuel's, Simon is the owner and applicant of 76 Prince William Court. Properties located in the R5 zone in the former Princeton township. You seeking a C2 variance to permit construction of a new patio and storage shed in exception to the required side yard setback. The subject lot is not complying with regard to the required 56.25 lot frontage, the existing is 51.75. The applicant is proposing to replace an existing stone patio with a new paper patio and extend it over the 15-foot side yard setback. And a six-by-10 shed is proposed to be attached to the existing garage in exception to the required side yard setback, so the patio variance, the required setback is 15 feet, the proposed is 6.29. The shed setback is also 15 feet and the proposed setback is 12 feet. The applicant has requested consideration under the C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be, I'd like to address them.
Well, I have, I have several, actually. The, the application itself, the, the zoning application appears to be incomplete, I mean, there's no reference to impervious coverage. It just seems to have not been filled out totally. And and then the survey. I guess the survey, I need a little explanation of the property because it appears that the small drawing and the larger drawing don't agree. I'm going to, scrolling down to the survey here. We're trying to get to the survey. It appears that the, there's a line in the, on the survey just at the edge of the house in the rear is a, a line which has got meets and bounds on it, which appears to be the edge of the drainage easement. And the, and the site goes, goes far beyond that, the rear of the site. And then when we go, let me grab the next one. When we go to the patio drawing, the patio drawing shows a 12-foot setback in the rear. And it shows the property line 12 foot back. So I, I don't understand how that relates to the survey.
So they, I mean, the applicant can address that. But the, the sheet that has the current state and the proposed state shows the setback for the the patio, which is the six feet point 29 feet, and then and the reason, I mean, I didn't calculate the, have the applicant calculate, I probably should have, the impervious for the whole site, but it's, it's not more than 400 square feet of net, no impervious is, is being added, and I could just eyeball it that it was less than the threshold for the lot area.
Oh, no, I agree with you, I agree with you, but it's just this, the drawings just don't agree, so maybe we can, I mean, it looks like if you look at the, the, what they call the floor plan, and they note the they note the property line there, that would indicate a much smaller site, so maybe the applicant can explain that.
Mr. Simon, let's, let's just swear you in before you testify, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So a little bit of background and sorry for that, so I bought this house about four years ago. And when we bought it, the previous owner had already a patio with stones. And when I bought it, when we did the zoning and et cetera, it has been noticed that there's no variance that has been applied when, so they didn't have the authorizations to do the patio, they did it by themselves. So I wanted to comply now with the zoning department and with the everything. And my expectation, because it's an old patio, I tried to keep the same foundation that was previously, so I don't know if you see carefully, but there's on the application, you see the old terrace, how that looked like. You see that it has been broken along the lines, this is what I did, so when I bought it, I removed some stone, but the foundation are still under the ground for now. And that's, that's what has been prepared. And, and then I asked my architect to take the same surface, or sorry, sorry, I'm not zoning language native, so it's a little bit difficult for me to explain everything. I'm not English native neither, by the way, you might have noticed. And so I, I try to, to keep it as closely as, as it was and previously, and just replacing basically the stones with new stones to be a little bit more adequate. Then relatively to, I tried to see on the document if it's mentioned, but I'm not sure the easement, the easement should be a little bit further because it's on the back, very on, on the backyard, very far, and there's a kind of hazement for flooding. And of course, as you know, the flooding never go to my house, at least at that level. So, and I think I need to double check in my documentation, but there's a variance that has been applied, at least for the for the deck as well regarding this easement line as well, and the variance has been applied like when they built that house long time ago. So that's basically the history I have on it, this is my my wishes was to redo it as it was with new stones, basically, and and, and because the border and the setback is a little bit inside, that make a very weird and kind of small triangle of patio. That cannot, that is difficult to use for an everyday, to put tables and things like that, that's why we wanted to keep it as normal as possible, and again, based on the same foundation that the previous patio was made of. I'm not sure I answer all your questions, and I apologize for that if I don't, but I try to do my best on that situation.
I, I appreciate that, I'm just I'm just a little confused. Oh, I think I see it now. So basically, the patio the patio is on the side of the house.
Correct, it's on the side of the house.
It's not, it's not in the rear, okay.
No, no, it's, it's on the side, yeah.
I see it now, okay, so, so the property line is, it's not the rear prop, well, it's not exactly the rear property line, it's the side property line.
Yeah, because the property goes all the way out to 27.
Yeah, okay, I, I understand it now, I just didn't have the right orientation, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Derek, can I ask you a question? It was out of compliance when the property was bought, so as I understand it, Mr. Simon took away a bit of the patio, so.
Actually, yes, ma'am.
So, so what, I guess my question is, is it, it, how was it out of compliance? And is it not, is it, can, can we know that it's not repeating the previous out of compliance issue by?
Yeah, um, Mr. Simon, when he purchased the property, came in, introduced himself to me, showed me a survey, and I said, hey, how's your patio get over the setback line, and he said, I just bought the house, it was like that when I bought it, and then he removed the patio that was encroaching into the setback line, and now what he's applying for is something kind of similar to what he had before. But that's why that irregular line on the survey, it doesn't look like the original survey, but he actually did go out when I spoke to him and remove the offending or, you know, part of the survey that was encroaching into the setback.
Okay. Okay.
But it's, so it's, but it's not repeating that issue with the new plan, the new plan is no, I'm not, I'm not a native speaker of zoning language either.
Well, if you go to the sheet that shows, there's a, there's a detail that shows a current state of a of like a bluestone patio and then a new patio, so there's a slight increase in square footage of the existing patio, and it does encroach over the property line. You know, probably nine feet, eight and a half, eight feet, nine inches, because his requested setback is 6.29 feet. So there is a variance, that's the variance. You'll note on the back of the, to the rear of the patio is the drainage easement. The whole backyard is like a kind of a drainage easement for that whole couple houses in the cul-de-sac. The reason I know that, because I was called out there before he bought the house on another issue regarding that, that drainage detention system in the back of the yard.
That, so that system was put in when those houses were built as a group, is that, it, it doesn't have to do either with this house or my other guess was it maybe had something to do with the state highway, but.
No, it's for these, this cul-de-sac to, to manage this stormwater.
Yeah, thanks.
Sure.
That clears that up, I appreciate that.
Derek, I wanted to ask about the, also about the drainage easement. Is, is it just a, like a flooding easement that you can't build on it, or are there pipes underneath? And the new deck, the, the proposed state, I'm looking at the proposed state picture, it doesn't show where the drainage easement is, so I can't tell if patio goes over the drainage easement or hits it or is, is separate from it or?
It's, the way he has it designed, it's outside the the drainage easement, it goes right up to the edge, if you can see on his, his one picture, he has the existing deck with the existing patio that's labeled current state, and then he has proposed state.
Right.
Yeah, I, Donna, I was a little confused too, because it's actually, it's actually on the side and not in the rear. So it's a little confusing, but it is, in fact, it does not go into the easement. It just goes into the setback.
And there's no pipe on the drainage and the flooding part, it's just a kind of a hole where all the water from the area goes, and really on the back, sorry, you cannot see with the, really on the back, there's one hole who draw and drain the water under the road 27. And these parts is on my neighbor, this is on my neighbor property, it's not on my property, it's a bit further. And it's, it's go a little bit like that up to this hole where the water is going out, and it's much more closer to the road 27. I don't know exactly how, so the, the house, as you can see on page 17, is pretty far from the one road 27, but the big hole and the deeper part of it is close to the road 27.
Okay, so what he's, so then, what, what is being proposed doesn't affect the drainage easement, and we don't need to be concerned about that?
Not at all.
Doesn't appear to be at all in the easement.
Okay.
Is that okay, Donna? Do you understand that?
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, my concern is, is there a pipe under there, and now you can't get to the pipe because the patio's there, or, you know?
No. It just looks like all of the, all of the construction is. Okay. It just looks like all of the, all of the construction is outside of the easement.
Yes.
It's, it's just the, only the construction just encroaches on the setbacks. And easement still remains as it is.
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Any other?
Mr. Richard, you, you said about the impervious coverage that it, he, they are below the, the maximum.
Yes, ma'am.
They were, he, the house was before and still is, there's, I guess, more coverage because of the shed and the bigger patio.
Yeah, the shed is six by 10 and the patio is going to add probably less than 100 square feet of new net impervious. So it's within, it's not over the 400 foot threshold that requires stormwater management. And the lot itself, the actual impervious coverage is, is less than the ratio that's required for the lot area.
Yeah. Yeah, I was confused Eve, when I first looked at it, because I thought the addition with the patio was in the rear. And it turns out it was in the side, on the side. And so, yeah, I, Derek is right on point.
As usual.
Usual.
Not always.
Your record's pretty good. Okay. Are there any other questions from any members of the board? George?
Yeah, Mr. Richard, you know.
A little louder, please.
I'm sorry. Is there any records when this, the original patio was installed?
I know. Um, when Mr. Simon came in, we checked and whoever owned the house before I'd just done it. You know, they weren't as diligent as Mr. Simon was about how it was.
Looked like it was decades ago.
Yeah.
Very long time ago.
There's no record of a variance from earlier.
That's why he removed it.
Yeah.
When we spoke.
Okay. George, any other question? Can't hear you at all.
I'm sorry. I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, good. Good. Any other board members' questions? Okay, Mr. Simon, what we're going to do next, if you're done with your presentation, is we're going to open this up to the public for any comments that someone might have. So if you'd like to say anything before we do that, you're welcome to.
No, absolutely not. So I do my due diligence. I inform all my neighbors. And so that's absolutely fine and you can open it for public. I am completely fine with that.
Okay, very good. So at this time, I'd like to open the public portion of the hearing and ask Claudia if anybody's raised their hands indicating they want to speak.
There are no hands.
No hands. Okay. Well, hearing none or seeing none will close the public portion of the hearing. Once again, Mr. Simon, now we're going to go into executive session, which we're going to discuss it amongst ourselves. And then try to come to a resolution and vote. Again, you know, you have the opportunity to say something before we do that or not.
So I have nothing, except I am completely open for any additional questions. Again, I am not a zoning or builder native language guy, so I can do my best to try to, to explain everything. I use an architect who did a lot of work in the Princeton area, so I try to comply with everything as, as I, as I know at for now. So.
See, you seem to have done a nice job.
I'm not sure, but I, at least I tried.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go into executive session and are there any comments from the board on this application?
I move we approve the application.
Okay. Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, that was a very brief discussion amongst ourselves. That's good, but.
Like it's fairly reasonable. It's not.
It seems to me, it seems to me that it's a very reasonable application on, quite frankly, a, a difficult site. You know, a large site, but a difficult one nonetheless. So, okay.
He's worked around the easement. That's the special.
Right, exactly.
Deal with that gives it a C2.
Right. I agree.
Okay, so Claudia, please call a roll.
Wilson?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Boy?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, just, yeah, listen a second. I have a, I have an issue with my computer here. Oops, sorry. Okay, we will now go to our next, our next hearing, our next case, which is 39 Pine Street. Case Z 22-184, block 3001, lot 21. Karen, is everything in order on this application?
It is. It is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Derek, can you summarize your memo, please?
Sure. Thank you. The applicants Andrea and Warren Stock are the owners of 39 Pine Street. Located on the R4 zone in the former Princeton borough and the subject lot is not complying with regard to the required 6,000 square foot lot area. The existing is 2729 square feet. It's not compliant with a lot width that requires 60. Existing is 48.62. It's not compliant with their lot depth, which requires a depth of 100 feet and the existing is 55.86. They're seeking C1 and C2 variance relief to permit the construction of two dormers that will be within the side and rear yard setbacks. The house itself is not complying with the required 61.8% floor area, existing 65.2. It's not compliant with the required eight foot setback on the side. A smaller side yard is one foot, eight inches. And the rear yard setback requirement is 35. The existing is 24 feet, two and a quarter inches. And the existing height of setback requirements, three to one, existing is, is non-compliant. Subject property was granted a variance back in 2003 to permit eight foot wide two-story addition to the southern elevation of the subject property. The addition encroaches upon the front side and rear yard setbacks. The current proposal is to construct four gables for, and one rear shed gable. The gable dormer and the rear shed dormer encroach within the required eight foot side yard setback. The application notes that a front yard setback is required for, for facing front dormers, however, the average prevailing front yard setback is nine feet and this figure can be reduced two feet, which would eliminate the front yard variance. So the side yard setback for the front dormer requirements, eight posted is four and a half feet. That's also the same for the rear dormer. The requirements eight, the proposal's four and a half. And then it also encroaches into the required 35 foot rear yard setback. And the proposal will be two 24 feet and two and a quarter inches. It's also in a suggested historic preservation zone. And it was reviewed by the historic preservation committee and Elizabeth, Kim is here this evening and she can go over the board's report on this case. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
I have a question for either you, Derek, or Elizabeth. The suggested historic, Tree Street Historic District, what does that mean?
Elizabeth, before you respond, I just need to swear you in for the evening. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do. Thank you.
So what does suggested mean for the historic district?
So, Mr. Chairman, I can address that. So the suggested is identified in the master plan as Tree Street Historic Districts, which are the properties that are north Nassau Street, which include like Pine, Spruce, Lyndon, you know, which have tree names. And that's why it was identified as Tree Street Historic Districts. They didn't always have those trees on their street, but it was named that. But they do have a collection of houses, properties that have a certain historic character that the former borough had identified and which they wanted to preserve and identified in the master plan as being historic. So that's why it's called Tree Streets Historic District, because they just happen to have the name of trees.
No, but it, you used the word suggested, which is.
Oh, yes. So the suggested is that it wasn't a designated municipal district at the time. And it's suggested, as we also see like in the, the central residential historic district, the Tree Street Historic District. At one point, the Witherspoon Jackson was a suggested district as well before it was, it actually came in with a nomination and designated, and it went through the process through the planning board and the council. So it, it's, it's these properties or these districts in which the former borough and township felt that they were important, although they didn't have all the documentation and resources to be able to come before the appropriate boards and the council at the time to be able to ask for it to be a true designation.
So just another point on that, the MLUL affords the historic preservation commission when a suggested district is either in the master plan for them to provide a courtesy review of the application. So a lot of times it's not in a suggest, in actual zone, but it's in a suggested zone. And they offer their comments on that. So that's afforded under the municipal annuals law.
Yeah, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to have it commented on. Yeah. Okay, Elizabeth, can you summarize your memo, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as we just discussed, this property is located in the suggested Tree Street Historic District. The applicants came before HPC on their April 18, 2022 meeting. And the applicants represented at that time that they wished to increase their usable attic space so they could continue to live, live at that property. And they wanted to do that by using existing slope roof, but by adding dormers to the front and to the rear of the property. The dormer space in the street have front-facing gable roofs and the rear dormer has a shed roof, which is a larger roof in itself. Constructions of the dormers are indicated will involve matching material and color to the applicant's existing house. HPC expressed support to your board to grant this variance, because they feel that it is a sympathetic improvement to the house. It's consistent with the symmetry of the existing base on the front facade of the house. That the wind, the, the dormers are also lower than the existing roof line from the front. And the rear dormers, the rear dormer, excuse me, the one is really not going to be that visible from the street. So they feel that this renovation will still maintain its historic and architectural value and be appropriate within the neighborhood. I'm available for any questions from board mayhem. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of Ms. Kim?
Just a comment, a comment given the earlier questions regarding designated. I mean, a, a, a possible historic district, maybe if, if Ms. Kim explains sort of the next steps that gets it to, you know, there's a review, there's a study. And then there's a vote on whether it becomes an actual designated. But as Derek says, it is, there's some, some in the, in the MUL, you know, designated has some validity too. So I, I don't know if Eve, you know, if, if you were heading towards what is a historic district versus what is a designated.
Well, I guess I just, I, I feel that if it's historic, if it's, if it's been voted on, then it has more, then we have more responsibility to, to whatever, whatever is within that district. It's, a suggestion doesn't seem like something that might happen, but I don't think it, it should guide what we do necessarily. That's what I want to understand.
So the properties that are listed in the master plan as suggested was approved by the planning board and council to be part of the, the, the master plan. Although it was not designated, because again, all the research was not provided to be able to go that course. So one example is going to be the Club Row, which was the eating clubs on Prospect Avenue. I don't think there's any question that those are, are of historic significance. They were a suggested historic district as well. So recently that has been, the nomination report has been prepared. HPC had reviewed it. They had made their recommendation to the planning board. The planning board had also supported it and had gone to the council. And they are going to be voting on it once we have an adopted or, or drafted ordinance. So that's an example of a suggested historic district that is within the master plan. Again, I don't think that anyone would question that that does not have historic significance. But again, it did not go through the course at that time to be designated. And that is similar with these and other properties that you'll see within that master plan.
Okay, Michael, are you comfortable with the explanation?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions of Ms. Kim or Mr. Bridger?
Ms. Kim, you, you brought up at the end of your report about whether or not trees might be, might need to be taken down for this work that, that we ought to ask about that. So, and I guess I should save that question, but I did notice that you had mentioned that, whether you thought, did you see that that might be possible? Did you see?
It, it wasn't addressed on, on the plan. So we had just asked the applicant if they could address that. And I think that they could address that when they, when they present as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Stock, you'll be making the presentation this, this evening? You're muted. There you go. Okay.
Ms. Stock, before you start speaking, we just want to swear you in. Do you swear firm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Can't hear you.
Muted.
Muted.
No, she's not muted. I think the volume must be down.
Okay.
Can't hear anything you're saying. No. Maybe the volume's down on your computer, maybe in the settings or something? I know nothing about computers.
You see the little arrow in the bottom left-hand corner next to the microphone? And you click on that. And when you do that, you have audio settings. And then under speaker, there should be a volume slide. Maybe that's not on.
No.
No, sir, can't.
Can't hear, I mean.
Of course, if you leave and come back in, like, kind of restart, I, I can read lips.
You also can, you also can call in.
On your phone.
You can call in on your phone.
Okay.
Give it a try. Give it a try. It's like a silent movie.
She hears us.
Sorry, I can't. I can't read lips. Were you, are you able to call in on the phone?
No.
No.
It's not working, the number?
There's a number on the agenda, on the meeting agenda that has that has dial-in numbers.
Do you want us to read one of those numbers out to you, and you can try that on your phone? Yeah. I'm not sure if that means, yes, you'd like us to read one of those phone numbers, but all right. So one of them is dial one, three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine.
What was that again?
I'll read, I'll say it again. Dial one.
She can draw it out and hold it up.
There we go. What's that say?
Zoom ID. What's the zoom ID?
Oh, the zoom ID is on the agenda.
Okay, and the zoom ID. Oh, okay, it's the webinar ID is eight, six, nine. Eight, six, nine, three, one, six, five, three, five, three, four. It's not happening.
Actually, if you're on, do you have an iPhone? Is that an iPhone? Okay, if you click on that blue link, it should take you to the site on your phone or under the agenda.
On the PDF, it should have a blue link. It's working? Or you could get a Sharpie or a whiteboard and do it all that way.
All right, would maybe maybe what we could do.
She says wait.
Oh, wait, okay.
Find something. She's smiling. There's progress being made.
Getting our five-year-old son to figure it out for her.
That's exactly it. He could do it in a minute.
It looks like she's in a second time in as an attendee.
There we go.
Thanks, Ryan.
Can you let Brian Walker in the meeting? Okay.
He's in attendees, Claudia. His hand raised.
I'm trying to click on the.
Okay, that's a good sign.
Am I in?
Yes.
Eureka.
I don't know why my phone is, my computer's not working. It's crazy. I'm so sorry.
Well, you could, you could make a very good silent movie star.
Singing in the Rain is one of my favorites.
So I think we were trying to swear you in, so we're just going to ask you, swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Brian, okay.
Please make your presentation.
And now we have you in stereo as well.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, he's right there, but he's not on. Okay, so we have lived on Pine Street for thirteen years, in this house for eight years. And we need the extra space for basically an opportunity that I that has presented to me where I have taken on a new position for a charity where I am the affiliate, the local affiliate from Mercer County. And I am in charge of collecting, sorting, distributing feminine hygiene products for women experiencing homelessness. And I need to store a lot of maxi pads and tampons in my home. Thank you, Miles. And our basement is not adequate for this. So we need to add on to our house to be able to, for me to be able to store it. Miles, please turn the light back on. I'm sorry. Thank you. We have our architect on with us as well to help answer any questions because, like the last applicant, I have no. I don't, I don't, I know, the terminology for zoning is very different for me.
Mr. Walker, can we get you on? We can't see you. Where'd it go?
He's muted. Well, who's, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And you're muted, Mr. Walker. There you go.
Sorry about that.
Okay, and I think.
We will swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And are you the architect of record for this project?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Okay, I I I will accept the fact that you're a licensed architect in New Jersey, and there's no need to go through your qualifications. But please tell us what you've done.
Well, the clients had had come and and were just wanting to use fairly generous space in their attic, generous space square footage-wise. But it's very low ceiling. And there's really only two windows on the existing gable end. So the idea was to just bring more light in both from the street frontage, and that's with the four gable end dormers, and try and provide a little more headroom with the shed dormer on the back.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I assume colors will be consistent with the existing house, and and it looks like window design is and things like that.
Yeah, totally consistent. And in fact, had the Marvin rep come out to confirm, you know, consistency. They're the Marvin Ultimate Wood Double Hung Windows that are on the existing house.
Good, good. Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
Okay, yeah, I mean, same divide light pattern that overall appearance is as consistent as we can possibly be with with existing.
Okay. All right, well, your drawing seems to indicate it's pretty consistent. Okay.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
In the pictures of the houses on street, the pictures of your house of thirty-nine Pine looks like a fairly, not flat, but very shallow angled. You're not changing the roof lines, are you? You're just adding dormers. Correct, the the existing ridge will remain as is. Okay.
But you're adding a dormer in the back.
Correct, but it it doesn't, it doesn't go beyond the existing ridge.
Right, right, but the the you're adding two dormers in the front on the left-hand side, which would be consistent with the dormers on the right. But then in the rear of the house, that, I guess, I'll call it a shed roof you've created, doesn't go higher than the ridge, but that's an addition.
Well, it, yeah, I mean, correct, it's it's an addition the same way the the gable dormers on the front is an addition. But in terms of actual floor area, you know, code-wise, it actually isn't an addition because the entire space has a head height just shy of seven feet. And so there's no, there's no new floor space that's been added to the attic. There's just additional headroom.
Yeah, no, I mean, your your elevations, your existing elevations do not show that space in the back. And obviously, there's a floor in the attic which goes from the ridge down to the eve. And you're just basically elevating that so you get more usable space in there.
Exactly right.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Okay.
I don't know if there's a question for Elizabeth, but I mean, just looking at the photos of the, and just being on the street before. There, it's, it looked like it's adding a whole nother floor visually because you're adding a third set of windows up the up the wall. And that wasn't a concern for HPC?
Just to interrupt, is it possible to show these things of these photos on screen? I don't know if Mr. Walker can do it, or Claudia, can you pull them up so the public can rate? And why don't we call this exhibit A1? And Mr. Walker, did you prepare this?
I I prepared the sheet based on photographs that I had in addition to ones provided by the client.
Thank you.
The the angle of the picture of the client's house is, yeah, the angle makes the, does make the roof look very flat. And it's, it's, it's a little deceptive. But my point was is you're adding, basically, if you're to overlay this, it'd be another set of windows of the dormers above, above the ones that are shown existing. And I'm not not making necessarily a comment about, I'm just raising the the idea that there will, the house is going to look a lot taller because there will be a whole nother, visually, a whole nother floor added.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure. You know, that that's, that's what's funny. You you look at photographs and it's like, well, gee, that's reality. Just look at the photograph. But there's all sorts of distortions with any photograph.
Sure.
And and that's why, in a lot of respects, it probably makes sense to look at the elevations because there in the elevations, you can see from the street level. You know, if you, if you did an outline up the side of the house, across the ridge, include the chimney down the other side. If you just did that outline, there's absolutely no change whatsoever. There it is true that at those window locations, in effect, it extends the wall. It is interrupted by by the roof line and the eve that's maintained. But yeah, visually, at that face, I, you know, it's a fair point you're making, but I guess just as another way to look at it, not in photographs strictly, but also looking in elevations. And of course, elevations are distorting because nobody sees that elevation the way they're represented either.
Right, yeah. Was there any thought about that, Elizabeth, or any comment about that, that I pointed out?
Yes, so the HPC actually did not have a concern about that. They felt that it was a common practice for historic houses to have dormers added on later, just like if there was a mansard roof that was added on, that was part of the practice of the evolution of the building. And they felt because they retained the existing slope of the roof, the slope itself was consistent, what's existing there, and they added the dormers on. And the dormers again were, the gable dormers were lower than the the roof line itself, again, which is appropriate. They did not have a problem with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, all right, hearing none. Ms. Stock, if you'd like to make a comment before we go into executive session.
Well, we've been on the block, like I said, for eight years, and we are very close with all of our neighbors. Pine Street is a small, it's a one-way street. It's, we feel like we're our own little community. And just talking with all of the neighbors and everyone seems very excited about what we're doing. They think that it's going to look great. And I, we we've reached out to the neighbors all around us, and no one seems to have a problem with it. So I'm hoping that it's a pretty straightforward addition, and everyone will be happy with it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So now we'll go into, we'll open this to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated they would like to speak on this application?
There are no hands.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Again, Ms. Stock, we're going to now go into executive session and try and make a decision. So you have the opportunity to say something again before we do that.
I don't have anything else to say besides everything I've just said. So thank you.
Okay, well said. Okay, so so we're going to go into executive session now. Are there any comments on the application, anything you'd like to discuss, or would someone like to make a motion?
I think it's an attractive addition to the house.
I agree.
I move approval of a C1.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Eddie, do we want to hear about that tree?
Oh, yeah, good point, the tree.
I'm sorry.
Thanks. I I felt like I'd missed my chance to ask that question.
No, you didn't. So can you explain the tree?
Is it coming there?
Is there a specific tree in question, or?
Well, is there a tree that interferes, that is going to interfere with the construction of the dormers, front or rear?
No, we no, we do have a large quasi cherry tree in the back that actually was trimmed today. But it's it's still there. It's a beautiful tree. It's in full bloom right now. It's beautiful pink. No, nothing is coming down for the construction.
Okay. Okay. Claudia, can you call a roll?
Olson?
Yes.
Dr. Davich?
Yes.
Boy?
Yes.
Mrs. Shriver?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Raymond Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay. Our next application is case number Z twenty-one dash one eleven, Twenty-two Parkside Drive, Block ninety-nine oh one, Lot six. Okay, Karen, is everything in order?
It is. The application is in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, is there anybody that we need to bring over to this side?
Yes, thank you, Claudia. We should have Eric Holtermann, our architect. And then the last person alphabetically on the list, Yegi Harry, the applicant, should be brought over as well.
Okay. Okay, we obviously have jurisdiction. And so Derek, can you summarize your memo?
Yes, sir, thank you. Lisa and Yegeni Hayeri are the owners of Twenty-two Parkside Drive. It's located in the R3 Zone in the former Princeton Township, and it's also located in the Princeton Battlefield Historic District. I'm sure Elizabeth will correct me on the exact district it's in. They're seeking a variance for a lot frontage to construct a single-family dwelling. The lot frontage requirement's one hundred and fifty, and the existing is forty-nine point nine five. The lot's currently vacant except for an historic garage and a historic well building and the remnants of an historic wind. The lot's currently vacant except for an historic garage and a historic well building and the remnants of an historic windmill. The applicant intends to construct a contemporary style. Pretty much one story, single family home with four bedrooms, kitchen, living room, dining room. Study, two offices, exercise room, a media room and a two part attached garage, they do intend to. Preserve the existing historic structures on site. Typically, in this type of variance, their lot frontage requirements 150 and the existing is. 49.95, the applicant should advise if they've contacted any adjacent property owners to determine if they could sell any land to cure the deficiency. There's a water easement that appears to be located where the new home was proposed, the applicant should address whether the easement's active or. If it is not, whether it can be removed, they've requested consideration under the C1 and the C2 criteria. Do you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them and if not, Elizabeth is here and she has a memo in this case as well.
Any questions of Derek? Okay, Elizabeth, can you summarize your memo, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as Derek had said, this property is located in the Princeton Battlefield Historic District, which is a state and national designated property. And the municipal designation, it's referred to as a Drumtwacket Outbuilding Historic District. The applicant appeared before HPC on March 21, 2022. HPC was very familiar with this project because the applicants came for two concept reviews. One in September of 2021 and another one in February 2022 prior to them purchasing the property. The property is adjacent to the cow barn and dairy properties of the Drumtwacket Outbuilding, which also makes its significance to the context of where it sits. The property, as Mr. Bridger had stated, there are three historic structures which include a garage, a pump house and a windmill. After the HPC had reviewed the application and. The improvements that the applicant had discussed, they voted unanimously to support this application. And urge your board to also grant the variances that they seek. The applicants worked very closely with HPC during the course of their two concept reviews to come up with this design. Which is one of the reasons that HPC was comfortable with the process they went through and reviewing and. Excuse me, and making their recommendation supporting it. There were two recommendations they do make to your board. One is that there is the installation of a fence around the perimeter of their property, which is really containing a new pool. And they did recommend that this fence be either a black or brown darker color fence, so it becomes less visible as it's viewed. Towards the existing historic properties, sorry, historic buildings on there and adjacent properties. They also recommended the light fixture mounted on the exterior of the house to be a dark color to complement the vertical wood cedar element on the exterior of the house. Otherwise, they would very support this application. I'm available for any questions your board may have as well, thank you.
Anybody have any questions of Ms. Kim? Okay. I'm. Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee, I'm here with our applicants and our project team. First, I want to thank Elizabeth and the members of HPC, I don't know if we set any records for numbers of concepts, but we, this is an important. District particular to the applicants and the relationship of this house to the historic structures surrounding it and on the site. Took a lot of work to to get right and and I I think working with HPC here. Really resulted in a on a phenomenal. Project that that we're all really excited and and proud of. And just want to thank Elizabeth, the HPC Chair and the rest of their team for for keep keeping to working with us. One correction to Derek's memo. Yegi Rezzi Reza are not yet the owners of this property, they are contract purchasers, I just wanted to, you know, make that clear that we we hope we have your support tonight. They still have some steps before they can. Purchase the property and one of them is is your support tonight along with HPC's recommendation. To allow a home to be built on the site, so what we have here tonight is is your classic C1 hardship. This, as you'll see, is a very uniquely shaped property, one that by virtue of its shape and size. Doesn't conform to lot frontage, but only on one side, very uniquely. This property, it's kind of like the nexus of the universe here, it connects to. Parkside in two places, so the part that is the traditional front side of the house. Does have the appropriate amount of frontage and it complies fully, it is a little sliver where it touches parkside a second time. Where there is not frontage on that second side where we need the variance, you'll also see. While we have, you know, reached out to all of the neighbors, you'll see that it would not be possible unfortunately to get enough frontage on that second side without either. Both, in fact, making one property not compliant and then destroying or cutting through. An important historic property that that we that we border and and kind of complement. This historic district was a as as Ms. Kim said, is a series of outbuildings from the Drumtwacket. Dairy, two of which are on this site and are kind of incorporated and respected by the design that Eric Holtermann and his team put together. The others are, you know, essentially right next door and very close to the lot line, so it's very both important, you know, from our design perspective to. To work with that and to unfortunately, that it makes it almost impossible to subdivide enough land off that adjacent property. Without destroying the historic building that's on it, so tonight we've got two. I guess sets of witnesses here, maybe we can have them all sworn in at once, our architect Eric Holtermann. And our soon to be, with any luck, property owners, it's been a long haul for them. But if we can have them sworn in and we can start our testimony.
All right, if you could all raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
I do.
Thank you so much. Yegi Reza, if if you want to just introduce yourselves to the board. I know it's been a long, long process where we're finally looking at the at the finish line for your project. But want to again, you know, introduce yourselves, your connection and desire to 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 be in in Princeton and, you know, the the work that you've done towards. This historically complimentary yet modern design that we've put together.
Hello, everyone, my name is Reza Hiery, thank you all for reviewing our application today. I'm a physician, I work with Mercy Catholic Medical Center, part of Media Hospital. System in Philadelphia. And we have been here for a few years in Princeton now.
Hi, good evening, everyone, my name is Yagane Hiery, I generally go by Yegi. Easier version, I'm a faculty at Stevens Institute of Technology with the School of Systems Engineering. I've been at Stevens for seven years, as it was mentioned, we've been living in Princeton area for four years now. We have two daughters, ages of eight and six and. We are looking forward to. Finally, and hopefully. Purchasing this lot and getting on with the project with the construction, it's been, as it was mentioned by Mr. Kennedy. It's been, it's been a while, we've been in contract since September. We have been fortunate to be working with an amazing team, as you see here. And we've had a great support of Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Holtermann. I believe you will see the design and we've we've been also very fortunate. To have had the support and cooperation of HPC, Ms. Kim, Mr. Bridger, so. We look forward to hopefully having favorable results tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I'll I'll turn it over to Eric to, you know, briefly, I know he's testified before this board. It appeared before to HPC here in Princeton many times, I know he. He he shares the role of of a volunteer in a in a nearby town and running their historic commission as well as is very familiar with these processes, but Eric. Could just very quickly go through your credentials and I'll I'll ask to offer you as an expert this evening.
My name's Eric Holtermann, I'm a partner at HMR Architects, which is a successor firm for Holt and Morgan, for anyone who's been in Princeton for a long, long time.
Excuse me, I'll will accept you as an expert.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Eric, if if you would like to share your screen, we can start going through our our presentation.
Yes.
If not, I've I've got it handy too, but I'll. Excellent, there we go, thank you so much. Ms. Casey, we we as per the norm, you know, we've we've sent in advance, one said if we could have this marked as as I guess A1, if that's all right.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, so so Eric, I think we're looking at the the zoning map here, but you want to, you know, kind of start and maybe explain where this property is. To to the board.
Right, with the blue arrow, you can see the sort of the diamond shaped lot that sort of stretches between the loop of Parkside. So that's the applicant's party of property. And then just to the bottom of the sheet, below the below our piece of property, on the right side is. Dairy and Farmer's House, magnificent Tudor structures. And on the left side of that is the 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 cow barn, equally magnificent.
Excellent, I think then we'll go to the next slide, I think that has the is the blow up of of the historic map, you want to talk a little bit, you know, it's, I guess we are in. 8E, the farmer's house in dairy, so to speak, but maybe just if you could describe some of the other surrounding areas that are shaded as as historic areas and then. Maybe orient the board to, you know, what roads Parkside connects to.
So right, so Parkside is coming off of, is that Mercer, I think it's, I think it's Mercer, right? So up towards the top right of the plan that's going into Princeton, across the road is the battlefield. And then the shaded areas are the. The Drumtwacket Outbuilding District. Our site is was subdivided from the others and, you know, has those those small buildings on it, which we'll see in a minute. Where the other two lots, just for more towards the bottom of the page, have the have the more serious buildings on it, the significant historic buildings.
Excellent, all right. So next, I guess we're we've got a neighborhood view here, an aerial photo, again, a very unique lot. I I guess the the right side, Eric, that's the site that we are, you know, is the traditional frontage for the house you've designed, whereas the left is kind of a secondary. Chance of touching Parkside a second time.
Right, and in fact, you know, the the existing driveway is here, there was a house here previously. So there is a driveway along this side, the site is relatively open to this piece of the road, on this side, there is sort of a higher burn. So in fact, when you drive along this road, you actually don't look into the site because there there is a bit of a hill there.
And then perhaps just orient us to the other historic properties, you know, in the area, those are directly below.
So so these are the two adjacent properties, you'll see the buildings and and future photographs, you'll see the buildings on those, this is the barn. You can see the back line of that barn comes right up to the property line. And in fact, this little white dot here, which we'll see we'll get, you know, blow things up a little bit more, is the garage that is on on the applicant's piece of property. But the barn is is a large U shaped structure like this. And then the dairy is over here and the house, which is Architect Glenn Freeze's house, is here.
Excellent, thank you.
So this is swinging around, looking again where this is, this is the front yard side of Parkside. Here's Architect Glenn Freeze's house, the the dairy is is hidden underneath these these trees and then this is the U shaped barn here. Where the lot line is actually coming right along this edge, this is the garage that is on the applicant's property, the wellhouse that's on the property. Front yard here, and then you'll see that we're putting the house right in here in the widest part of the lot. And the next house and all the rest of the houses on the street are more modern houses and are not part of the historic district. So this simply shows the addition of the of the lot line so that you can see how the lot line skates right these two buildings, so that in fact, we're actually quite close to it. A few site pictures, this is from Parkside on the front yard side, sort of indicating that here there are no curbs. All of the yards simply have lawn coming right, right to the edge, simple. This is looking into onto the applicant site, a little unmoaned at the moment. This is the garage that's very close to the to the barn and to the lot line, and this is the wellhouse that's on on the right side of the property and what you can see farther back. Farther in the back is a abandoned windmill, which will be retained and is also part of the designation. So these two are both the garage, you can see that the garage is very much right in front of the barn. And then these two are the wellhouse, a little more freestanding. This is looking from the back of the site. The the sort of the the small frontage on the on the on the other side of of Parkside. Looking back towards where the house will be built between these two buildings, this is the wellhouse on the left. You'll see that we're proposing a pool here as well and then over here the garage. Some other site views then, Architect Freeze's house and. This is from standing near the wellhouse, looking at the front elevation of the garage with the cow barn beyond. Again, another another street view, the trees in the front in the front here will be retained, there are some trees in the middle of the site that will be removed, the ones towards the street will be retained. Again, additional information on the driveway and pavement, nothing, nothing very complex is is proposed, every, all of the neighbors just have very simple pavement. And lawn right to the right to the edge of the pavement. So. Survey of the existing, again, here's the the main front yard, existing driveway to the garage. There is an easement here because originally this this wellhouse or pump house had pumped water over towards these buildings. It has been abandoned and any underground utilities there are have been abandoned. On this plane, you can also see, here's the windmill back here.
And Eric, just to because Mr. Bridger brought it up in his memo, just to to reaffirm the actual terms of that easement, which was private. To the neighboring property when they actually used this as their water source, terminated by its own terms, once they connected to public water, so it is. Both no longer in use and actually self extinguished once they connected up to the city system.
Here is the plan showing footprint of the proposed house, here's the existing driveway. And we're we're actually looking at removing some of it because we don't actually intend to use the garage as a as a garage. Some added driveway garage at this end. So. The the house is shaped in an L because there is a line that runs right along here, that is the prevailing setback, so that we're. We're, you know, we're right at the prevailing setback at this corner. At the rear of the house, the wings of the house bend so that they are orthogonal with the historic buildings. So so that the house is a little more closed towards the street for privacy and then and then much more open, as you'll see on the on the plans towards the back. With sort of a long view out towards the windmill, sort of between between these two. Two existing buildings. The other thing that you see that you hear, the hatch on the roof is a green roof on the on a flat roof. Plan of the house, street street facade, a large entry atrium in the middle. Slightly smaller living, dining, kitchen, family. Garage and guest room. Kids bedrooms over here, master bedroom back here. This 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 portion of the house, the garage and staircase is a split level, half level down to the garage to work with the slope. And half a level to a study over here that's that's on top. View of the house from, from Parkside. Again, this is, this is the corner that, that I pointed out that is sort of right at the prevailing setback. And then back you can see the other, the other building. Longer view from towards Parkside with, with the plan of the house, dairy and barn in the back. You can see the green roof, the materials, stucco, wood and dark brown, wood trim and dark brown windows. The windows will be, will be clad, brick here, and those are materials that are, that were selected for compatibility with the, with the existing Tudor. One of the things that we worked very closely with Historic Preservation Commission with, and they agreed with us that was that we felt very strongly that a modern house was appropriate here. Fortunately, that's exactly what Yegi and Reza wanted was a modern house. And this, this house, we, this site, we really determined is really appropriate for. So the program you can see here really keeps the whole house really on one level, which again, was another request of the applicant. Here you can see the side of the house where the garage is where, where the, the site slopes down and is two-story on this, on this portion. So one of the things that, that by keeping it at one story does is that it really does keep the house pretty low. So that the taller house, taller properties over on the left side, the barn and the house are really looking over across this house and across the green roof to sort of minimize its impact. This is the other, other house with the back of the well here, and then kids' bedrooms here, master bedroom suite here. Rear of the house where the, the, the house is really bookended. And that was Elizabeth's term, and I think it's a good one, that the house is bookended here by the wellhouse and the garage. And then spans between with the more, more formal spaces in the middle. More informal kitchen, family room spaces, after bedroom over on, on this. More to the garage side. These were some of the materials that were presented to the Historic Preservation Commission. We presented more, we won't present everything tonight, but we did want to point out that the, the green roof is basically a system of a tray system that's essentially about eight inches, eight inches thick. So that it's, it's not very tall and it's sort of gets an annual maintenance. It's not grass like the, like the roof of the Wawa that grows very, very tall. It's, you know, it's a, it's a green roof that, that really doesn't grow much taller than this and then gets maintained once a year.
Thanks, Eric. Here we have the kind of, the business end of, of our, of our pre-existing non-conforming condition. There are classic C1 for this very interesting shape. So as, as Mr. Holtermann said before, on the top side of this lot, there is the 150-foot frontage required. On the bottom side, there is not. And, you know, we looked at it a couple of different ways, but ultimately with, we have 50 feet, we need another 100. And the lot next door has 220 feet of frontage. So they only have 70 feet to give if we were to subdivide a chunk off of them to, to make us conforming. Unfortunately, they, they don't have enough. And that line would also go through their house, by the way, but there's just not enough land there to go. And if we were to go on the other side, as you heard before, we'd be right into the dairy barn, which is, which is very close to the lot line. There's just not, not enough land there to make that second frontage conforming, even if we wanted to. So maybe back to the next slide. I, I don't get to say this often and, you know, my well done to, to Eric and his team. But again, after a lot of work with HPC, they did unanimously vote to, I don't know if I've seen in one of the reports before, enthusiastically support, maybe the last time I ever get to say that. But they did a, they, they really, it was a wonderful process and we're really pleased that the end result is something that they could support because it's, it's again, the, the applicants here understand their role as stewards for a historically designated neigh- neighborhood district and with these important historic buildings on their lot. And, and again, we're just very pleased with the end result of the design and HPC's approval for it. With that, I guess I'll just, again, this is your classic C1 variance. That is a function of the unique shape of this lot. The design itself does not require any variances. It is a fully compliant, which was a tough thing to do on a unique shaped lot adjacent to these historic structures, but it is fully compliant. And the only variance required is the existing one for the unique lot shape. Again, my, my hats off to the, the applicants for, you know, having the, the stomachs to, to do this. It is a very difficult lot with a lot of challenges from these historic structures. But they pulled together a phenomenal team with, with Eric and, and his team. And again, want to thank HPC for their work with us on, on all the concept reviews and then their final approval. Absolutely love to answer any questions or, or thoughts that, that the board or your professionals have for, for Eric or, or other witnesses. But we just want to thank you for your time here tonight. And for everyone involved in, in helping us get to this point.
Thank you. Can you take down your screen? Please. Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Board members, do you have any questions of the applicant, Ms. Kim, Mr. Bridger, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Kennedy? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just before, let me just note for, for the record, there were two recommendations in, in Elizabeth, in Ms. Kim's report. We certainly agree with them and, and would agree to those as conditions. I think we, we did at the, at the hearing as well before HPC, but just want to put it out there that, you know, the, the fence, for example, we were in agreement with their recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, we'll open this to the public at this point. Claudia, has anybody indicated their desire to speak?
Trying to move somebody over. One second.
I see somebody, Joel Greenberg, please. Okay. Mr. Greenberg, we can't see you and you're muted. Now you're not muted, but we still can't see you. There you go.
Okay, now you can see me.
Right.
Could you give us your address, please?
Yes, 145 Parkside.
All right. And do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of remarks and a couple of questions. First, for whatever it's worth, I believe that my wife and I are the oldest, the oldest tenants of Parkside Drive. Been here since 1980. Now, I also have done, my wife and I have done a number of historic developments, including buying a a convent in Jersey City and converting it into condos. And it's in the neighborhood of the Holland Tunnel, by the way. And it's on a historic register. Now, one of the first comment I have is I personally disagree with the Historic Preservation Commission. I do not feel that the design and style are compatible with the existing neighborhood homes, design and style. That's personal opinion on that. I'm sure the house by itself, very nice house. I don't think it deserves to be put on Parkside Drive with the other houses. Now, the, one of the questions I have, since there are three historic buildings. And the windmill I'm calling is a building. There are three historic buildings on the existing property. What provisions? Well, first, are these buildings on the historic register? And if not, I want to know why not? If they're historic? And if they are historic and on the register, what if any provisions are being made for the new owners to take responsibility for maintaining those three items? In particular, the windmill. The windmill is in a sad state of affairs and it's likely to fall down if not taken care of. Now, will the new owner have some responsibility in taking care of that building? Will the new owner have any responsibility with respect to altering the other two buildings that are existing on the property? And if they want to make changes, what is the Historic Preservation Commission going to do about it? They did nothing about it when a previous owner knocked down one of the other historic buildings on the property. Now, is there any possibility? I think, I think the question was answered, but I just want to make sure on the record there is no possibility of having another entrance or exit on the other part of Parkside Drive, which is closer to Quaker Road?
I, I perhaps can answer some of those.
You want to let Mr. Greenberg finish and then?
I apologize. I thought that he had completed.
Okay, Mr. Greenberg, please continue.
I think, I think one of my main concerns is the entrance, the second entrance onto Parkside Drive. And the maintenance of the existing historic buildings. I assume there would be new variances required in order to make any changes to those buildings and not maintain them properly. And also for having another entrance or exit onto Parkside Drive.
Okay, is, is that it, Mr. Greenberg?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Sure. Two very particularly good points at the end there. And one from a variance perspective, Princeton through its neighborhood character and Derek, stop me if, if I get this wrong, but each property in Princeton has to front essentially to one street. And in, if there were to be a driveway put on the other side of Parkside, that would require a variance and a trip back to this board for, for approval. Second, I, I believe, you know, because these are this property is in a historic district under the, the full purview of Elizabeth Kim's office and their board. Almost any changes to this property going forward, whether it be to the, those, those three historic structures or the house itself would require at very least a trip to the HPC through their process, either administratively or to their board to ensure that their, their compliance and, and review happens. If not to this board as well, if it, if it triggers some other kind of variance condition. So I'll invite Elizabeth to fill in there if, if I've missed anything there. But I, I, I don't believe that it would be possible for the, the property owner to, to really make much of any change from this plan without revisiting it with, with the HPC.
All right, well, the, the one thing that bothers me about what you just said is the lack of saying anything about the, the windmill, which is in a state of disrepair. And if nothing is done to it, it's going to come down. And it's a hazard to start with unless it is repaired.
You know, I can speak to that, that we've, we've surveyed the windmill. We understand its condition. It is not our intent to make it an operating windmill again. We're not looking at, at, you know, adding, adding the wheel at the top. However, we have had our structural engineer out to look at it and there is every intent to restore and repair the structure itself. I mean, it's an important focal point of the site and it will be rehabilitated.
So that part of the granting of the variances, it's assumed that the new owners would take care of maintaining the structure of the windmill?
All three of those buildings are contributing structures in the district. So the, the intent is to rehabilitate all three of those. And we're unable to make any significant changes to them without going back to HPC and getting our approval.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think that addresses, Mr. Greenberg, your concerns.
Let me just make one more comment if, for the new owners, since they, I don't know if they are aware of it or not. But the, the building, the the big building, the castle, as I call it, is of very historic significance. Not that it was originally part of Drumtwack, but that it was also the residence of Dr. Kelleher. Dr. Kelleher was at one point the chairman of, or the director of the Princeton University Art Museum. And during the Second World War, towards the end of the Second World War, he became one of the monuments men. And I don't know if you saw the movie about the monuments men and their collecting and return, eventually returning with Kissinger and Douglas and Dr. Kiss, and Dr. Kelleher returning the crown jewels to the Hungarian people. So there's a lot of history in that building. Hope if you do get the variance, that you try to maintain that type of history of the building, maintain it all. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Mr. Holtermann and Mr. Kennedy. Okay, Claudia, is there anyone else who's indicated they'd like to speak? Claudia, you're muted.
There are no hands.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We'll end the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Kennedy, would you like to say something before we go into executive session?
Just very briefly, again, I want to thank the board for considering us this evening. I want to thank Elizabeth in, in particular, and, and her board for, for working with Eric and his team to, to come to this design. There were a lot of iterations here that, that made this, you know, the end result that I think they were really so, to use their word enthusiastic about supporting. And again, just as, as far as the variance goes, while we are in historic district and they have the, this, the HPC, as I say, on the historic preservation plan, it's not advisory at this case, it's actually their approval and we appreciate them for that. But as far as the variance goes, this is your classic C1 variance, your classic hardship. There's nothing that could be done about it. The lot was created this way for whatever reason. And unfortunately, it's, it's really nothing that can be done about it. And, and we asked the board to grant it so that a home could be built here. And then we're glad that it happens to be, in this case, the home so so both meticulously designed to respect the history and so well supported by HPC in, in their review. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. We'll go into executive session now. Board members, do you have, first of all, any questions of the applicant, the attorney, the architect? And if not, do you have any comments on the application or would someone like to make a motion?
There's a, a hand raised by the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I just, I just wanted to make a couple of comments before we move forward. Wanted to say that we are excited to be a part of this district. And I also wanted to say thank you, Mr. Greenberg, for that piece of history. And thank you for the comments. And if there is any assurance here, especially and specifically about the windmill. You know, I have two little children and the last thing I want is for them to run around in that backyard, close to that windmill and, or anywhere close to any structure that is not safe. And again, as another layer of assurance, I'm a civil engineer. The PhD in civil engineering, so I understand structures very well. So it would be absolutely our priority to make sure that we, we take care of the structures the way they should be taken care of. Again, grateful for everyone's cooperation and everyone's support in this. I also want to, I also want to say that we have been pleasantly surprised, I really don't know what's the best way to say this. Ever since the notice gone out, the notice gone out for, to the neighbors about this project, which was last week, we have been so surprised and so welcomed by the number of emails and voicemails that we have received from our future, hopefully future neighbors, welcoming us already to the neighborhood and telling us how excited they are about the design. And so for any of them who are listening to us, we are very excited. Thank you so much for all the messages. I tried to respond to, to all of them, but if I've missed anything, here I am. Thank you. Thank you to, to all of you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, back to where we were, or we're about to be. Comments, questions, motions? A little louder, George, please.
Okay, I just want to address Mr. Greenberg's point about the, the building and its setting in this neighborhood. First of all, I like the design of the building. And I certainly is modern compared to what else is in that neighborhood.
Can you speak up a little bit? It's hard to hear you.
Sorry, okay. What I'm talking about is the design of the building, which, the house, which I find very attractive. And I like the fact that it ties together the two more older elements, the historic elements. And just in one sort of example of how that can work, I, I agree, it's a bit far afield. But there was tremendous controversy when they built the glass pyramid atrium in front of the and yet it has, you know, become a major attraction. It's very different from the, the style of the original building, but it, it works. And, and I just offer that as an example of how this can work. I don't know if that squashes Mr. Greenberg's feelings, but it's my, that's my view on it.
Thank you. Other comments?
Well, I, I also agree that I think it's a brilliant looking building. I think that the, the other house, the architect house that he said that's on the adjacent property is very beautifully done and sensitive and kind of matches the other, the other existing buildings. But I think that what this does is takes the idea and extrapolates it in a modern, contemporary way. And I think it does it in a beautiful, beautiful way. So I, not that we have much to say about how buildings look in the zoning board, but it's nice, I like to see a building that I do like being built and I think it is a wonderful looking building. And I think that the, the approach to its placement on the property and taking advantage of the views and the other buildings, I think has been very, very well done. So, you know, I, I definitely support this application.
I, I would have to agree with you, Mr. Davich and also George. I think this, I think the house is nicely sighted, very well sighted to relate to the existing structures and the existing adjacent properties. And I think the, the house will be very complimentary to the site. So I, I like the design very much, actually.
I like it too. I think it's terrific looking. It is different, but it's terrific. I'm just curious, which has nothing to do with zoning, but how many square feet is the structure?
Um, give me a second. I have that, I have that number for you.
I also do like the addition of the green roof element on there, both for stormwater management and also I think it is sensitive. I think it'll, it'll help the, the building set into the, into the site more effectively. And I have some comments about tray systems as opposed to other bulk laden green roof systems that you've, but that's not really my place. But also one other thought is that those, I haven't been by there recently, but those two big trees in the front, you might want to have them looked at by an arborist and selectively pruned. It looks like they were a little, just for protection, so that they don't get damaged with ice storms or whatnot, because they're, they're getting pretty leggy and they could break if they're not, if they're not taken care of.
If we take the, if, if we don't count the garage and the well building in the floor area, it's 5700 feet for the house.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Yes, Donna, please.
To Mr. Greenberg's point and to the applicant's response, is it appropriate to make it a condition that these, these historic structures on the building be, you know, properly maintained?
I was going to raise the same question, Donna, and where's Elizabeth? I don't know if HPC's position is that's for them to enforce, but I was going to raise the same question as well.
Well, I guess we could, if someone makes a motion and that could be included as a condition of approval.
Well, you know, I kind of wanted Elizabeth's thoughts on that too.
Okay.
HPC would definitely support having those three structures looked into, to have them restored, to have them stabilized. That was something that the windmill actually and the garage was discussed with the current property owner when they had bought that property. So HPC would definitely be in support of that. They would not want anything to be left for neglect.
Good.
So that means restore and
And maintain.
And maintain in, in not change, not change it, not paint it pink or something like that, but keep it as it is, keep the historic quality.
Yeah.
Correct.
I don't know the right way to word that, but.
Well, maybe no substantial changes and keeping the historic nature of the properties. And no, no changes without the review of the HPC.
It, it seems to me that I imagine we asked the applicants that, you know, one of the reasons why they're buying this property is because of, of those, of those historic properties and the, the value they bring to the property overall. And obviously the prop, you know, this job was cited to bring those into play. So I think that, you know, we should ask them if they think that, I imagine that's part of one of the reasons why they bought the property. Is that true?
Oh, I, I think that the, those two, the, the structures add significantly to the, to the property.
Especially the pool's going to be put right next to one of them, right?
Right, it's going to be a great little pool house.
Eric, do you want to comment on possibly future usage or intent like?
I, I can. The wellhouse will be used as a building adjacent to the pool. Again, however, there is no plan for significantly altering that building. You know, we may take a look at the, at the front doors to restore them. But other than that, you know, the idea is that it would be used for, you know, pool storage and, and maybe some nice interior space there. And any changes that we do to the doors, for instance, if we wanted them to be more glass, to have more glass in it, we would go back to the HPC for that. The garage actually has a modern, a, a not very nice modern garage door. So that one, actually, we plan to put back a, a more appropriate historic garage door. Currently, the plan for that building is simply using it as storage.
So, so in, in what I'm hearing is that the, the applicant's plan frankly is, is along the lines of what the chairman just laid out, that, you know, if there were to be any changes of tho- those kinds of natures that we would, you know, go back to HPC and go through their process. These are historic buildings in a historic district and that's the, if not required already by the ordinance, I think it is, it's certainly the appropriate thing to do.
Elizabeth has her hand up.
Please, Elizabeth.
Thank you. And I just want the, the board to understand that this historic district is type one. And the easiest way to identify that is type one was the former township and type two was the former borough. So type one is actually not only from the right of way, but it's within the property itself and that's viewed from other historic districts, actually the whole site. So any changes that would occur on the property should come before for review. And if I could just address one thing that I know that there was some talk about the architecture of the new building. HPC does not support new architecture coming in to copycat what they think would have been there because they don't want to make history confusing. They want historic buildings to be easily identified as historic. So the newer buildings or additions that come on, they actually like to see it not actually look like the old so that you can tell where the new addition is. So that was one of the reasons they had, they strongly supported this building because there's no question that is not part of the original historic fabric of the district.
Thank you. And one, one thing Mr. Greenberg had mentioned, these are not officially designated buildings, the existing buildings, they, they have no, no official designation as historic structures within the town, the county or whatever.
They are historic structures within, within the municipality.
Within the municipality, okay, good, good. Okay.
I'm, I move. We accept the C1 variance with the additional, additional caveat that the outbuildings are maintained and restored and maintained with HPC approval.
Okay, and that would be, that would be a condition of approval even?
Yes, I think so.
And would the board also want to make conditions, the HPC recommendations? That was with respect to the color of the fencing and color of the light fixtures. I think the applicant already said, you know, they would comply with that.
Yes.
We think so.
We could add that.
Okay. Are there any comments on the resolution or the conditions? Would somebody like to second this?
I'll second it.
Who was that?
It was George. Yeah, it was me.
Okay, all right, any, excuse me?
Sorry, George wanted to do, I beat George to the punch.
Okay. Are there any comments on this before we go to a vote? Okay, Claudia, please call a roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Jermaine Cohen?
Yes, and let me add that this is a very exciting project and a cause for at least me to drive around Parkside Drive for the next year or two, just to see how it progresses. Good luck. It's a nice, nice project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Can we take five minutes?
We can. It is, what is it, nine forty? We'll reconvene at nine forty-five.
Go lie down, probably.
Okay, it is nine forty-five. And I guess we'll just wait for Mr. Floyd. Oh, there he is. Thanks, Michael. Okay, it's nine forty-five. We're going to reconvene. And here our last case of the evening, which is case number Z twenty-one dash sixty-one, eleven Madison Street, block twenty-eight point oh three, lot fifty. Karen, is everything in order?
It is. The application is in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Derek, can you please summarize your memo?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Rob, Bert, and Mindy Frank are the owners of eleven Madison Street. They are seeking a corriere ratio variance. For the construction of a new home and a detached garage. A C1 variance is requested to prevent the construction of the new home and exception to the required side yard setbacks, combined side yard setbacks, lot area, lot with front yard setback, height to setback ratios and distance between windows of a building and impervious coverage. Subject properties in the R four zone of the former Princeton Borough. It's also a suggested historic site. The subject lot is not complying with regard to the required sixty-foot lot width. Existing lot width is twenty-nine feet. Lot areas required in six thousand square feet, the existing is four thousand two hundred and five. The property itself is not complying with regard to the smaller side yard setback requirement of eight, the existing is three point one. The larger side yard requirement is twelve, the existing is three point two. The combined side yard requirement is twenty, the existing six point three. The height to setback ratio is four point five to one, the existing six point five seven to one. Existing impervious coverage is sixty-one and a half percent. Excuse me, the requirement is sixty-one and a half percent, and the existing is sixty-three point three five percent. And the required front yard setback is twenty-five feet, the existing is twenty-four point three. The applicant will construct a seventeen hundred and eighty square foot home and a new will demolish the existing seventeen hundred and eighty square foot home and construct a new twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight hundred square foot, three-story home featuring a basement, living room, kitchen, dining room, four bedroom study, gym, three and a half baths. And their detached garage is proposed in the rear yard. Covered front porch is proposed on the first level and open decks are proposed on the third floor of the front facade and the second floor of the rear facade. In terms of the FAR variance, the maximum proportional FAR for this lot is the existing FAR is forty-two point three four percent, and the proposed FAR is sixty-six point three percent. There's both variances that are required. Lot air requirement, six thousand, the existing lot area is four thousand two hundred and five square feet. The required lot width is sixty, the existing is twenty-nine feet. Smaller side yard setback is eight feet. Required proposed is one point two five feet. Larger side yard setback required is twelve, the proposed is three point one. Combined side yard requirement is twenty, proposed is four point three five feet. Height to setback ratio on the left, the requirement is four point five to one, the proposed is nine point nine three to one. Height to setback on the right requirements, also four point five to one, the proposed is ten point five to one. Impervious recovery, coverage requirement is sixty-one and a half percent, proposed is sixty-seven point six nine percent. Front side setback requirement is twenty-five feet. And the existing, or excuse me, the proposed is sixteen point oh six feet. And there's a section between buildings, section seventeen eight three eighty-three requirements, ten point six feet, and the proposed is seven point five eight feet. The applicant is requesting consideration under the C1 criteria for this these variances. If I have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. Not, I think Elizabeth ready with her memo for this case.
Please, Elizabeth, can you summarize your memo, please?
Just a question, a state.
Yes.
For Derek, just clarify for me, the the windows between buildings, that's on that north side?
I believe so.
Yeah. Because it's a driveway on the other side, so it's 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 windows between two buildings can't be, have to be a certain distance. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, the, the glass, the glass on the side elevation is limited up to fifteen feet by the building code. So the closer you are to the side yard setback, the percentage of glass on the wall is reduced. So we'd have to, we'd have to conform to that as well as any other requirements.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions of Derek? Okay, Elizabeth, can you please summarize your memo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so eleven Madison Street is located in the suggested central residential historic district of the Princeton master plan. This application appeared before HPC at their meeting on April eighth. Originally, due to the significant changes and renovations to the exterior of the dwelling, HPC was under this thought that the, that the structure was going to be demolished. However, after the applicant and their attorney had made their presentation, they understood that they were going to retain the existing footprint and the framework. However, they were going to put a new facade and also alter the the height of the building and add on to it in the rear in addition to constructing a new detached garage and new parking access in the back. The applicants say that they're going to add an additional one hundred, one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight additional square footage of living space to this enlarged structure. Historically, the dwelling on the property was constructed in nineteen oh four as a two and a half story wood framed house in a Victorian style. The renovations proposed, the existing dwelling are substantial. While the majority of the framework is remaining, the appearance of the existing house really is not going to be retained, it's not going to be recognizable, and it will be a dramatic change. The applicant had described in their presentation at HPC that the the new style of the building is going to be a combination of Japanese and Scandinavian architecture. The renovated structure included a new garage will have flat roofs. The windows will have new black glass and the size of the windows will be enlarged. The exterior facade will also have dark gray parents and aluminum railings for the new balconies that will be constructed. The applicant did say that they were interested in possibly preserving some of the interior elements such as the the wood floors. However, as you know, HPC does not review anything that's interior to the building, it's always the exterior. And although that, that is a that's considered favorable, HPC does not review that. HPC was unanimous in their determination that that the current renovation plan not be approved by your board as they grant their variances. They felt strongly that these renovations proposed were out of the character of the cluster of the Victorian homes found on both sides of the street. And that the existing dwelling and its historic structure really does not, is not retained. And the the new proposed design is a dramatic change the parents of the street scale. They feel it's visually not compatible with the other dwellings within the Madison Street where this is a one-street neighborhood that most of the properties, if not all of them, really are unaltered or minor alters. I know that there was an application that HPC had reviewed sometime, I believe in two thousand twenty, which was seven Madison Street, which HPC did support because the addition was on the back and they were able to retain the character of the existing historic building on the street size. So again, the renovations that the applicant is proposing, HPC felt that it did not fit into the neighborhood. It did not honor the historic character of the structure or the recommended historic district. So unfortunately, that was their, their determination on this. They did talk about the fact that the windows itself were not appropriate. The sizing was not appropriate, the roof line was not appropriate. So if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of Ms. Kim? Okay, all right, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and Elizabeth and Derek for the the background here. Again, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Liam for the applicants, Mindy and Robert Frank. We've got our design team here. It looks like they've been moved over. Robert and Jim are part of the architectural team. We'll hear from them in a bit. But a couple of things, just, just to start out. Robert and Mindy are longtime Princeton folks that bought this property recently and are looking to adapt it for their family's needs. It is a modest neighborhood of entirely undersized lots. So the, the list of variances that we'll go through are largely, in fact, entirely a function of the lots all being undersized. And you'll see, and we'll talk about similarly sized homes throughout the neighborhood, both in terms of square feet or floor area numbers as well as the design. So this is modern design night here for zoning board. We just had one in a historic district, and now we'll have a proposed modern remodel of a home on Madison in one of the suggested districts. It's as Ms. Kim noted, I think there was some perhaps confusion about the application, but you know, when, when we're talking about the existing building and it fitting into the neighborhood, it's, the applicants are keeping the existing footprint. You'll hear that they're keeping the existing sidewalls and front walls. The existing, the distance to the street and the front lot line is unchanged, the existing enclosed porch is being kind of adapted and reused and repurposed as the new front of a house with a different looking facade. You'll hear that the roof line is being lowered from the existing house, and we'll, we'll go through. We, we think a lot of exhibits and the thought that went into making this house fit in. Importantly, this proposed district, you know, if we go back to the materials produced in the original comment letter from HPC, it's, there's no particular architectural style for this neighborhood. We'll go through and we'll go down the down the street and, and you know, kind of show our, compare our design to the existing and our design to the neighboring properties as well as some others on the street so we can talk about its relationship to the other properties and, and to it fitting in. But it's important to note, though, that the while, while the council hasn't acted on making this historic to, to, to put this under the, the full approval purview with HPC. You know, the original recommendations note that there is no single architectural highlight here on this street and that eclectic nature, you know, we feel would, would be benefited, we hope you agree, would be benefited by the variety and the reuse of this house as the applicant as proposed. And we'll also say, as the applicant as proposed, that there's a, there's a, an A and a B, and we are appreciative of the processes that Princeton has. So we met with HPC for their courtesy review. And we listened and we, we hope that we'll, we'll walk you through our design and, and maybe you'll agree that our design fits in the neighborhood. But there are some key things that we heard from HPC about their view on how the design fit or didn't fit into the neighborhood. And we heard that. And we have exhibits that we will show you this evening, kind of an iterative design, changing from a flat roof to a a hip roof with a, with a ridge that is recognizable with other, some of the other houses on the street. Though there are examples of flat roofs, homes or shed dormer homes on the street that we'll talk about too. A considerable lightning of the front facade, which is what we heard from HPC, including the, the windows and the front material color so that it, you know, essentially blends in a little differently. You may think better. But I'll just say differently with the neighborhood. Tonight, we do have Mindy and Robert Frank here are applicants and homeowners. And we've got two representatives from Halliday Architecture, Robert and Jim, who are part of the design team here. I'd like, if we could, to have everyone sworn in now together so that we can, you know, start our testimony.
Mr. Kennedy, could you please give me Jim's full name? All the screen says it's Jim.
Excuse me, one minute, Karen. Michael, did you have a question?
Yeah, before we go to consultants, I have to question one thing you said, Mr. Kennedy, you compared it you know, to Parkside and the modern house going there. Now, would you agree or not agree that Parkside eighty percent of the structures on Parkside are modern now, are, are like nineteen seventy onward houses? I, I, I would argue that Madison, the houses on Madison are in no way a similar situation as the houses on Parkside. Yes, there's some historic structures, but the main street, I, I drove the street today. They're, they're basically sixty, seventy, nineteen eighty houses.
So I, I
They're not the same.
Didn't mean to compare the neighborhoods. One is a fairly modern subdivision that is carved around, I don't mean to say actual historic structures, but structures that a historic district with protections was designed around. And the other is a
Go ahead.
I, I, I just meant to note that we have, you get to see two modern designs here this evening. That they're, they're two very different neighborhoods.
You said they were similar neighborhoods and the similar, and you're right. Then we agree, they're two totally different neighborhoods.
I apologize. I was just pointing out that of, of all the things you get to hear, you get to see two examples of, of modern design in a row. That is the only point I make there. And apologies if I confused, because you are correct. The, the, again, I don't mean to say suburban style, but it's a much larger lot neighborhood on Parkside. Most of those homes were, were built not at the same time as the historic structure.
We agree.
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy, I wanted you to identify fully.
Jim, who has his hands up, and, and Mr. Halliday, if you could turn your camera on as well.
We need to see him, so.
Got to turn his video on.
Um, can it, any, can you hear me? All right, I, I got a choice of, on my screen to raise the hand, question or answer more, it just says, I don't have anything that says, allow me for a screenshot.
I should, on, on the, on the bottom left, there should be a camera icon next to the microphone that should say start video.
No, it just says mute or unmute.
Claudia, has he been let into the meeting as a?
That's, you know, I, I think he's been added as an audio-only participant. I still see him as an attendee. Ah, that's, you know, I I think he's been added as an audio only participant. I still see him as an attendee. Rather than moved as a panelist.
There you go.
There we
All right, we good?
Turn your camera.
Are you lying on your side?
No, okay.
Apologies for that, Jimmy. Uh you, we we probably made you feel like you were ten thousand years old, but it turns out it was uh just you hadn't been moved over correctly. It was nothing on on our end. So apologies uh for that. Uh so uh we we have uh uh two architects, Robert and Jim uh Holiday fro- from architecture firm as well as Mindy and Robert Frank.
And could you spell your last, uh Miss, Jim's last name is spelled how?
H O L L I D A Y.
All right, uh Mister and Mrs. Frank, Mister Naring and Mister Holiday, you would raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um so we'll we'll start with our our applicants. Um uh Mindy and Robert, uh welcome. If you could, uh you know, just take a minute to introduce yourselves and uh um uh talk about your 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 plans, but well, your connection to to Princeton and and your your plans for uh for your property at eleven Madison.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone on the board. Uh we we've been living in Princeton for over thirty years. Uh we bought eleven Madison, uh basically walking distance to town to to uh for our family. Um this is our dream home. This is not, not that there's anything wrong with an investment, but this is not an investment, this is not a flip. This is something that that we're going to be living in, looking to live in full time. Uh it's our only home. Uh and I think one key point I'd like to leave the um the the board with is that um we we love design, design, architecture, color, texture, um you know, shapes and forms. Everything about the house um and the neighborhood, how it fits in contextually, as well as how it fits in with our lives is very, very important to us. So the the design of this home and everything about it, both from the exterior as well as the interior is something that uh we really thought through, because we do this every day, both uh in our own lives as well as, you know, personally as well as professionally.
Yeah, just to reinforce what Robert had said, we've lived in the area for many, many years. We initially moved here from New York City, North Jersey. Um absolutely loved the area. Our son was born at Princeton Hospital when it was on Witherspoon Street. And um he was raised in the area, went to school here, even took classes at the university while he was in high school. And uh we just wanted to be, we were close to town prior to this, and we wanted to be even closer. We wanted to be in town and to really enjoy and further appreciate everything that Princeton has to offer.
Wonderful. Um thank you, guys. Uh don't go far. I'll probably need you a a a little bit more uh in a bit. Um uh next, um I guess we're gonna kind of tag team this 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 evening. So I'll ask, uh you know, Robert and Jim, if you could both kind of give us the the benefit of your um uh your backgrounds. Uh we, they're both worked on this project. Uh I think Robert will be giving most of the testimony. But uh Jim is the the lead architect there, so we wouldn't have them both available uh uh for testimony uh this evening. So uh maybe Robert, we'll start with you and then uh go to Jim.
Okay, yeah. I've been uh at Holiday Architects for sixteen years and uh project manager. I've been working very closely with Robert, Mindy on on this project and uh trying to fulfill their dreams of of their new house.
All right, and and Jim, you're the architect of of record, I suppose, for the for the project. We maybe give your experience.
That's correct. Uh I have a bachelor's science degree um in architecture from Drudge University. Uh I am a registered architect in the state of New Jersey and good standing. And I've uh been in private practice in New Jersey for thirty-two years.
All right, thank you. So I guess I'd um like
Can I ask Mister Kennedy, is Mister Naring a licensed architect in New Jersey?
So now Jim is the licensed architect in New Jersey. Uh Robert just kind of acted as a project manager in design role here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um so, Mr. Chairman, if any other information, like to hear about the background before we proceed to have uh both uh Jim, uh you know, uh presented as our expert architect and uh and and Robert as well as our designer.
Mister Kennedy, I I don't, I hate to belabor the point, but Mister Naring, then his his field is design. Is he a licensed architect anywhere or he is not an architect?
Not a licensed architect.
You're not?
No.
Okay, so you're going to be the project manager um for for the project, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so in what area do you want him qualified as an expert, Mister Kennedy? I understand Mister Holiday, because he is a licensed architect.
Sure, and the construction techniques, uh design and and the the uh the functioning of of the project from a from a construction and design perspective.
Mister Naring, how many years have you been doing this? If you said that, I didn't hear you. I apologize.
Twenty-two years.
Steve, you're muted.
I'm muted?
Yeah, you are muted, Steve.
Steve Cohen is muted.
Yes, Steve Cohen.
I don't think there's any, there's any qualifications to being a designer. He is working for the architect of record, Mister Holiday, and we would accept Mister Holiday as a, as an, as an expert. And um and um his associate is just a a staff member. So I have no problem with that.
Thank you. Um so as we uh often do, I'm going to uh hopefully share my screen here and ask that we uh mark our exhibit set um as uh our apologies, I have too many screens here. I'm gonna hopefully not stop the sharing by by moving it over uh and it so apologies, is that is that visible here?
It is. It's called the undersized lot variance application.
Thank you. Uh when I drag things around on my screen, it 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 pauses it temporarily. Um so uh Robert and Jim uh first uh here on our exhibits, we have a copy of the zoning map. Uh Robert, you wanna orient the board to um where uh the property and project is?
Uh yes, this is eleven Madison uh street in Princeton, and the blue arrow is pointing to their lot, which I believe is lot uh that lot fifty, I believe.
Yep, that's correct. Um here we've got a a an overhead view of of the properties at the 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 house outlined in blue.
Correct, yeah, that's the uh property outlined in blue. And it's on Madison and Willow comes up behind it, or that's how they will get into the driveway.
All right, uh going to the next sheet, we've got a this is the tax map of the uh of the block in question.
Yes, yeah, and you can also see that all the lots there are all undersized for what the uh the zoning requirements are.
Got it. So the 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 red lots are shaded um as being uh non-conforming, undersized lots. Uh and the blue lot is is eleven Madison?
Correct, it's eleven Madison, it's also undersized.
So uh I believe you were responsible for taking these photos here. Maybe you can walk us through a tour of uh you know, of the neighborhood and the properties surrounding uh eleven Madison on the street.
You can see uh eleven Madison is in the uh middle of the lower uh pictures. And it does resemble the houses to the left and to the right uh the the style. Uh but as you look across the street, there are many different styles. Uh you have the Tudor eight Madison, uh a renovated uh house that's kind of modern and on ten and a house of twelve that has flat roofs. So I feel that, you know, what we're gonna do is, you know, in line with uh what's going on in the neighborhood. Some, you know, they're changing uh some of the looks of the uh older homes to uh more modern type houses.
Uh is there any singular predominant type of architecture on the street?
No, there's, it's mixed. I mean, uh like I said, you had the Tudor style um at eight and
Sorry about that.
And um you know, the modern at ten and you know, the the flat roof, especially at twelve, which is pretty much mimicking what we're going to be doing on at eleven Madison. But uh there's a mix of architecture.
Attempt to move the next slide. I'm not, my computer's not cooperating. Here we go. So um what are we looking at here? So this is an, is this an elevation of the current house and then a um proposed uh an elevation, I guess, or rendering of of what the facade would look like?
Correct, yeah, the one on the left i- is the existing house uh with the uh the the pitched roofs and and the uh third floor under the attic. Uh and then on the right side is what we proposed. Uh what our client wishes would be, would be to be have the uh the modern sleek look, uh very simple look. Uh and we're not making it any wider. It's gonna stay, the sidewalls are gonna stay. The uh not coming out any farther past, you know, than the the original front porch. And uh that actually, the right side kind of steps back. So street of it, from the street is gonna give a I feel a less overpowering look to the street. It's gonna kind of be subdued.
So a- as in 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 the proposed design, a couple other questions here. So one, um is it the same height as the current building as proposed, or is it taller? Is it?
Now, the this uh, it's about two feet shorter than the original, than the existing.
Got it.
To the top, to the top of that flat, we're the the left side flat.
Got it. Um and then further lower on the the right side element would even be further lower still?
Correct, is, that's, that's about two feet lower, maybe thirty inches lower, but that whole right side steps back.
And so you mentioned, um you know, again, that we're not planning to demolish anything. Uh but talk about what what is planned to be reused uh from the home in terms of walls, foundations, uh and particularly the front foundation.
Uh yeah, uh so basically, what we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be saving the exterior walls of the house. Except we'll be adding on to the rear. And uh we're not coming out any farther towards the front, towards the street. Uh that, where those windows are on the front elevation of the remodel, uh those are in line with the, where the existing porch is. So we're keeping, we're, you know, we're not going any wider and we're not going any higher. We take, basically, you're taking off the existing roof and third floor and building a new third floor. So we're keeping all the walls of the existing foundation.
Got it, okay. Uh and uh so here we have kind of angled, though, I guess impossible to actually see, because there'd be houses in the way. Um uh renderings uh of the front. So you want to talk a little bit about the the materials uh proposed?
Yeah, so the the material on the left side is uh vertical wood uh siding and it's a sustainable wood. Uh you know, it's very uh, you know, carefree. It doesn't have to be maintained. It's it's very stable material. And uh so that's vertical on the left side. And we carried it down the left side so far, because the houses are really close together there. You're not gonna really see the rest of it. So what we did on the left and the right side is is do the uh stucco material. And then on the right side, we did the same thing. It's just a different shade of the same wood, but it's on a horizontal plane, just to give it some uh different flavors to the elevation. And then we get, again, we did the stucco down the right side once you get down so far, because the houses again are close together.
So the 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 front profile of the windows on that left side of the house, that is the, using the same foundation and and is the same location of the current enclosed porch, is that correct?
Yes, correct, except for adding a second level on top of that.
What what is the foundation? What is the foundation of the existing house?
It's a stone.
So it's rubble?
Yeah, rock, stone rubble foundation.
I mean, the house was built in what, nineteen, the early nineteen hundreds?
Yeah, nineteen oh four, I guess, is what.
So you're going to, you're gonna use that foundation and build basically a new house above it?
Well, we're gonna keep most of the exterior off. We're first and foremost, we're gonna have our structural engineer go out and verify all the uh existing foundation and walls and everything to make sure they're suitable for uh for this new construction. And I would assume that they would be, because since it's been standing for a hundred and twenty or almost a hundred and twenty years. Uh but we intend to keep the foundation and the exterior walls up to the second floor.
Okay.
You haven't, you haven't had your engineer out there yet to look at this.
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, you want to talk a a little bit about, you know, the, it it seems pretty conscious that the the house has stepped or staged back. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, that that that's just uh how the design kind of worked out with the layout of the existing walls on the first and second floor. And to keep uh the far, the F A R down on the right side, that's where the stairs are going up. Uh we kept the ceiling there uh to the bottom of the structure, uh you know, seven feet or less than seven feet. So uh it doesn't account to the F A R on that area there on the the upper right. Uh because it's just the staircase and a and a small hallway. Uh so we decided just to step it back and this way again, it keeps it, you know, more subtle from the street. It's not being overpowering.
I guess that's, that's the part that I want to um focus on. I think even uh in the comments from HPC prior to our hearing with them, they talked about and perhaps uh a appreciated um uh that incorporated both the the front entrance um and uh the lower height um and that the taller portions of them have been stepped back. So was that a a conscious decision to step those back and 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 kind of respect the streetscape there?
Uh yes, yes, that was uh and it just worked out with the way, I guess, with what was there in the house. And we wanted to keep it so it wasn't, like I said, overpowering on the street. So yes.
So uh here we're looking at some some different profiles. Uh tell us what we're looking at here.
So uh on the left side, that's the left side of the house and with the uh detached garage on the rear. Uh and that, of course, is access, will be accessed from uh the the road behind the house with a new, excuse me, with a new driveway. And uh the garage will be similar in uh design to the house with the flat roofs. And then, uh as you can see, we also have the flat, you know, the flat roof stepped down at the back too. And that's pretty much what what is there now. It's a, it's a very low, sloped roof over top of the the rear of the second floor. And we were adding some uh, an outdoor uh an outdoor uh covered area on the first floor to our client, you know, clients uh like an outdoor covered area on the first floor to our client, you know, clients like to have an outdoor space where they can go out and sit and, you know, even when it's raining or just being out of the sun. And they're going to have a grill out there because they enjoy sitting out there and cooking and and eating outside. And then up above that, we're having a small balcony off of the master bed. Because and that's what's on the back there where that low roof is. That's the new master.
So.
See that on the right side.
So on 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 the on the right rear profile, we see that kind of outdoor room space. And then you'd also see that on the left here from the side profile, that is actually open to the to the outside. That's a well well covered and and floor area technically that is actually the outside?
Yes. And then we the the client also wanted to put some vertical boards there to add some privacy to since the they're so close to the lot line to add some privacy from their neighbors.
And since we're looking at the profile, maybe you could talk about, you know, again, we're we're re, you know, changing the look of the existing building, changing the roof line, but there is a rear addition on on the back for their, you know, their you know, space needs. Could you just talk a little bit about where that addition starts and what what the elements of that are?
Yeah. So where where the tall fireplace is on the left, just to the left, just to the right of that, that's the original back of the house there. So we're adding on that covered porch. That's what we're adding on towards the back of the house, just that area. And above that, we went, we took the second floor over top of that. I believe it was like four or five.
Actual new parts of the home here, it's this outdoor room in the back and then the second floor parts here that kind of creep over, cantilever over.
Correct, correct. And, you know, of course, that whole third floor is all new space. And a detached garage.
Now you are increasing significantly the floor area ratio of the existing house.
Yes.
I mean, it's gone up, it's it's gone up to, or the floor area has gone up to twenty nine hundred square feet. According to the according to the application.
Okay. Yeah, yes.
And Robert, of that, how much would you say is this outdoor room?
That was about I want to say that was about two hundred and, but maybe two hundred and fifty square feet or around there.
So that would, I mean, that's still the maximum permitted and the existing is seventeen eighty, the maximum permitted is twenty one eighty six. And even if you took that room off, you're still going to be twenty twenty six hundred, almost twenty seven hundred square feet?
Yes.
So the so the increase in the in the floor area is significant.
Yes.
And that's reflective of the full third floor and the back.
Correct. Yes, the pretty much a lot of that was from the third floor because it's not under the a pitched roof like the exist.
So essentially, none of that third floor counts as attic.
Correct, except all the the where it steps down. Where the where the stairs and hallway are.
And that's not reflected in the overall proposed area, I assume?
The the lower area?
I mean, the square footage that you show on here, twenty nine twenty nine, that's reflects all the area of all the enclosed area at the minimum height?
Correct.
Okay, so it so the 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 overall bulk of the building is significantly larger than the currently existing building. And the and the maximum permitted.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, why?
This shows bulk i- in a minute, but Robert, so the, you know, you're you're squaring off the third floor.
Yes, you don't have it. It's not under that pitch truth like existing because most of the third floor in the existing, there's very little that's counted in the the F A R.
And by having a flat roof.
I'm sorry.
By having a flat, by having a flat roof design, Robert, then you have to count essentially almost all of that, whereas the footprint of that third floor is essentially unchanged from the current house.
Correct.
But it does dramatically increase the overall size of the house.
Yeah, that is.
Correct.
Okay.
And this side, you can see it's a full right side with the garage again. But now you can see how that right side does step back that later horizontal siding wood siding, how it how the left side does step back and not present itself so much on the street. The streetscape. And then again, it's we have the rear elevation with the garage where the where Ryan has the cursor there. So that's showing it from being back in the far of the year. And then it's just another perspective of the garage from where you're coming down the steps off the rear patio.
And then you could see that two hundred fifty square foot or so kind of outdoor area, closed space, yeah.
With the balcony above you.
So you want to want to walk us through the the actual floor plans here?
So with, you know, the older designs that are a hundred and twenty years old, the, you know, those old houses are pretty much you know, the the rooms are all cut up, you know, you have dividers for rooms everywhere. We created an open floor plan. As you can see, the dining room, kitchen and gathering that's straight through. And then with nice big doors, sliding doors, looking out over the back and into the covered outdoor lounge and dining area. And the right side of the first floor, we kept the stairs in the same location and and just kind of redesigned the back half. And we were adding, like I said, we're adding on that covered area in the back. And a little bit of that mudroom is getting added on. And then moving up to the second floor, again, you the original plans are, you know, they're all small rooms and and very not so much, not so big closets for modern living. So we created a very nice master area with a seats with sitting area in the back, some big walk-in closets and and a nice large master bath, because they had the bathrooms in the the current house are very small and not very good for modern living. And we have a nice second floor laundry and a second in the secondary bedroom with its own bath. And then on the third floor, since, you know, covid and everything, you know, everybody's working at home or a lot of people are working at home. So we created a study library up there for for our clients and the small home gym, just for a couple little workout things and and a nice bedroom for with a, you know, hall bath for when their son comes into town and spend some time with them. And you can see that shaded area on the right hand side, that's where the ceiling is, you know, we're kind of making that around six foot eleven ish. So it's under that. So it's considered that attic area.
Or at least it does fit the definition of attic, but it's but it kind of mimicking the under the eve, some under the eve area that would have been in in the front gable roof that that you're replacing with a flat roof.
Correct, correct. And then on the far right side, you can see that that's the detached garage and it's just a one car garage. And it's, you know, approximately, I think it's like two hundred and sixty four square. And here we can see that how everything lays out on the property. And that we, you know, how thin the property is compared to what it should be, you know, what the standards are for the neighborhood. Side yard setbacks are very small. And then how, you know, the garage is within the the rear yard setback. We're creating a driveway for, you know, for few cars and parking a car in a garage.
So the the existing condition for the site is is with the rear driveway. Now that's how that's how they.
Correct. There's a gate. There's a, I think, a powered gate back there now. And they're gonna keep the power gate and and use that as the and redo the driveway from what's currently there. But that is how they they don't have any parking except for street parking in the front there. The the property is not wide enough to have a driveway on the side. So that's where theirs comes in through through the back.
Now, on the looking for Madison on the left side, there's this shaded here, this existing paver walkway or shared driveway. So that's, you know, something that that is on the site, but, you know, too narrow really for the homeowner to use. So what really is that? That's that's staying in place, but that's, you know, essentially.
Yeah, it it's part of the neighbors to the left's driveway, that paper patio is on, you know, paper driveway goes from, I guess, it's nine Madison all the way up to the side of their property. So they're going to keep it so not to burn any bridges with the neighbors.
Got it. So they they don't they don't use that. They don't park there, but it just.
Yeah, they can't.
It's kind of a a shared driveway that they really can't.
Correct. Yeah, correct. Small walkway.
So there is a an increase of of coverage, but approximately two hundred square feet as part of this plan. Is that is that right?
For, yes.
And I'll also, since we're we're back here, I'll I'll perhaps note this is your understanding that, you know, since moving in, they've reached out and been kind of working with the Willow Street Neighborhood Association and and kind of voluntarily helping out or paying dues for their maintenance of that street back there?
Correct. That's what Robert and India, they're helping out with all that stuff on Willow Street. Since they are.
I guess we'll get into the the variance numbers later on, but since we have this map up here. Since you are keeping the side walls, the the setbacks essentially are are staying the same as the existing condition. Is that correct?
Correct, except for the where those two fireplaces are in the family room and the outdoor covered area, those are coming into closer to the side of property line.
So that's essentially the only new change to those those.
The side walls, correct.
Okay. And same thing with the front, the what we're looking at here is the that that's the existing, you know, footprint, I suppose, of the the front of the existing porch?
Yes, that's as far as the existing front porch comes out.
And, you know, it's a a Princeton has a prevailing setback standard, but it in this case, it's we happen to be proud of a neighbor on the left, but behind the neighbor on the right. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
But but still, variance belief is still needed, even though we're not going.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Never.
I have a question on the front yard setback, if I could, since you just mentioned it. Because your application says there's a difference between the existing structure now and the proposed. It says the proposed will be sixteen feet. I guess, and a half inches where the existing is twenty four. Can you explain to me how it's not different, but it is different?
Sure, I I'll try and then maybe Robert and Jim can help and Derek will probably correct both of us or all three of us. But my understanding is because we're we're not literally the 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 distance of that wall and foundation is not moving. That is staying the same, but but potentially as a covered porch now, there is a different way of measuring the the setback. There's there's a way to push into that, I suppose. And I believe the difference is a function of that. We're not actually changing that front line, but because it's it could be considered a, even though it's enclosed now as a room, could be considered actually a porch and a porch can can protrude into it. And it's a a different, you don't measure that. That is my understanding. Robert, what is tell me where where I've got that wrong? And then Derek, tell us when perhaps where we've both gotten that wrong?
Yeah, my understanding is the same as as you're trying. It's just a matter, I don't think they measure it to the covered porch. The covered porch isn't part of that front yard. You can go into the setback with the front yard into the front yard setback with a covered porch. And they so they measured to the actual front wall of the house. So that's where that twenty four was a twenty four point four or twenty four point three feet was measured back to was the the front wall of the house, not the front wall of the porch.
Okay. And I would say I I I appreciate the, you know, the step back in the front and how it it helps you know, come closer to, you know, blend a little bit better with the streetscape. But the other, you know, side of that coin is the addition of the second floor over where the porch was. And you're basically bringing more volume relative to the adjacent and all almost all the houses on that street. You know, the main part of the house starts on a different line than what you're going to end up with the, you know, the porch and and the new section above it, second floor section. Now.
That's a fair fair comment, you know, I think as well, where I think we're about to transition to some kind of comparisons and you know, to to get an idea of how this looks with the other surrounding houses. And I think that that's actually a perfect comment to to segue to that. Mr. Floyd, so.
Yeah, before I I I stop, just another question, because on your application regarding building height. Now, someone has said it's going to be two feet less than the existing. Your application says it's going to be one foot less. And again, which is?
Robert, you want to want to clarify that? Because there'll be a third one too. We'll we'll throw it.
I'm looking at, you know, what I originally did here, the existing, you're allowed thirty five feet. The existing is around thirty four and a half feet high. And our proposed building, which you see here, is thirty two feet, nine and a half inches.
Okay. So you know what we're looking at in your application. The existing is thirty five and the proposed is thirty four.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to see.
Robert, is it your testimony that the what you just went, those numbers are are the correct ones now as we as this got profiled?
Correct. Yeah, the the ones I gave are
Okay.
Pretty accurate.
Now, now let me further to that. As you scroll down, at least I'm looking at it, you've got an alternate front elevation too, don't you?
That is, that is correct. So we we, you know, we we went to HPC's courtesy meeting and and heard some comments from them and we, you know, not a lot of time went by, you know, we we, you know, there was a tight schedule, but we did. You know, Robert and Jim went went to work immediately to, you know, see if there were some things that might be more palatable, you know, to if if the the zoning board is is feeling as HPC did. If if responding to some of their questions would would or or comments would be of interest to you guys. So we can, we could talk about that now, you know, I don't look at the clock and we're 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 running out of daylight here, but but we get that up next, I I suppose, just to to get it out there if you.
Well, I guess the question is, what is in in, I'm looking at the drawing in Title eleven Madison Street Revised Plan Context with Different Houses on the street. And it's got a pitch, that's that's it. And it's got a pitched roof on it. And the height to the top of that pitched roof along what along the lines of what Mr. Floyd mentioned, what is that height?
I think we have that on another. I think that's on another drawing there. I think we have that on another, I think that's on another drawing there, Ryan, I think it was like thirty, yeah, new peak is four inches lower than current roofline, so it'll be about thirty thirty four feet, two inches tall.
Okay. And and that one, just while it's up, the colors of that structure, are they gonna be consistent with the other ones, or is this, is this all lighter materials?
So the the idea of this, and you know, I know we're we're kind of jumping out of out of out of order a bit, but we we heard from HPC a couple of a couple of things, one that the the color was was too dark, the materials were too dark. And the windows were too dark, that made the windows too prominent. And there was a lot of discussion about comparison of the the new roofline, so we we heard that and did a alternate, you know, it's essentially the same remodel, but with a different roofline and different lighter materials that make the windows seem much less prominent in 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 color, you know, and feel and and, you know, impact.
So this this proposed facade change, we'll call it, is is much lighter than the original one. I mean, this is all light materials and.
So here's, here's a side by side of the side by side.
So so you're opposing the one on the right?
Well, opposing one on the left, but we, there's not really a process on in a courtesy review to to do much with the information other than to try to a adapt to it. So we we, you know, I I think we'll hear that 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 you know, if we went back to HPC, this is not exactly what they were looking for, that their 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 comments weren't, while we, you know, we did our best to try to hear specific things that, you know, kind of constructive criticism, things that we could adapt to rather than just don't change it. We we tried to hear that and and make it lighter, so drastically different materials on the front so that the windows are much less prominent, we kept hearing that over and over again. And then a a roof that while overall is slightly taller than our original proposal, still at peak lower than the existing. And having a a a peak and and hip detail that perhaps, you know, there there are examples, we'll we'll talk through them of of flat roofs in the area, including one across the street. But again, one of the other core things that we kept hearing was that there are not a lot of examples of flat roofs, and that's not matching of the neighborhood.
Elizabeth, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to the the board to understand what that conversation was. So what the HPC said is that they were not opposed to this building or this new design, but they just said they didn't like it here. They were concerned because they were altering so much of the historic character that's unrecognizable. And that's why it was thought to be demolished, because there was nothing, even the windows on the side, the front. Yes, they had no problem with the scale because they're really using the same width from the streetscape. So they didn't have a problem with that or the height. And the comment that Mr. Kennedy is talking about about the color and window size and the roofline, the roofline definitely was a comment that a lot of the HPC members talked about, because we talked about their five houses that are clustered where eleven Madison sits, which is nine, eleven, thirteen, fifteen and seventeen, seventeen isn't shown on their streetscape, but S K dash nine. But it all has the same type of features, so they are clustered, they're on small lots. They have some details on it that are appropriate to the Victorian style houses. And when HPC was asked, well, you know, what can you tell us about how, you know, what could we do? One of the members, she stated she's a color specialist. And she said what she looks at often is the color, the texture, and so she talked about the windows being dark, the size of them, the texture, the color of the exterior, which should be lighter. But that was really kind of taken out of context of the fact that they were saying that the the existing house is not being when you say renovation, renovation means restored, so this house is not being restored, it's being altered. And as much as they are supportive of sustainability of retaining the foundation and the walls and things like that, in this case, that's not preservation, that's not historic preservation. It might be considered green, it might be considered sustainable, but it's not considered historic preservation in their eyes in this case.
Thank you, I I actually agree with you. Yeah, this, okay, Mr. Kennedy, please continue.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one more thing? I apologize.
Certainly, please.
And and when it was compared this property to twenty two Parkside, I really think that you cannot compare it, Parkside does not have a structure on there. Let's say that they have the cowboy, which is right behind it. If they had torn down the walls, kept the foundation, altered the roofline, put new windows in, made it unrecognizable. I'm ninety nine point nine nine percent sure HPC would not be supportive of that, and I believe that that's what's happening to this property, that it's not really honoring the historic nature of this building and the neighborhood and the cluster of five houses in which it sits.
Thank you, I actually, I I well, we'll talk about it as we as we move forward. All right, Mr. Kennedy, can you wanna keep going? Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, Mr. Kennedy, you wanna pick up where you left off?
We 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 skipped ahead quite a bit, so let's let's go. I I again, we we met with HPC. Again, we we really did our best to try to extract some usable comments about where we should go with the design of the house. And the the dark color, the roofline, you know, we really struggled frankly to to get information that an applicant can turn into changes that might be palatable to the board that ultimately has a a say in it, so this revision represents our our best attempt to take what we heard. Which and we heard more than just no, and 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 I don't think that's what HPC just said, but we 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 attempted to pull out of of their comments, things that were actionable other than just don't do something. And so the the roofline and and the color and the the front windows of how, I think there's a, whether it's a imposing nature of them, that how they felt or or looked. That's what we tried to do with this revised design. Robert, I guess we'll just step through some of these. So that you could see those renderings. Here is that in the context of the neighboring houses, the the scale is you know, quite remarkably similar, you'll see what did an overlay of the existing house, because it's ultimately from a profile perspective, almost the same house here. This is a context that we put it in. Here we have with the two houses that are actually side by side. Here's what the houses across the street, because again, what we we feel that we're attempting to 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 delve into and understand is how this design fits in to the neighborhood, and again, there's no particular historic standard to match here, there's no particular, you know, the the one document that was put in place as part of the master plan, I guess, recommendation a couple decades ago. Notes that there's no one specific historic style and, you know, looking across the street and down the street, you you can see that, so here's what the house, you know, that would fit in, not just with the neighboring houses, but with the houses across the street, the one kind of newer modern example and modern, not as an architectural style, but modern as in kind of new, as well as a flat roof house directly across the street that that again, has a a a different massing that we we feel that our redesign not just respects, but is is kind of less impactful. Then, again, to put the them in a context, you can kind of see where we we heard from HPC that the colors and and the profile really stood out and didn't blend in. We tried to take that information and turn it into something that blended in differently, or 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 we'd hope better. So again, on the left is the original proposal, on the right is the what you want to call it toned down, what you want to call it two point O, what do you want with the revised roofline to 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 fit in here, we we've also overlaid the existing homes here on over the both the original and that so on the left shows our original proposal with the kind of two point O proposal silhouetted on top of it. On the right, it's the existing house, exactly as it is now, pre renovation with the new roofline design superimposed, if you can see it from a bulk perspective, it's quite you know, it is less so than the the current profile. And and Robert, maybe you could point out this confused me a bit, but it almost looks like that we're adding house to the left here. Is that that vertical piece there, that's the chimney that's being added, that's not new house?
Oh, on the left side, the shorter left side? Yes, that's the that's the chimney on the.
When you when you overlay that profile, I guess we we use the chimney as part of the profile rather than the whole house. So it almost makes it look like we're expanding the house to the left.
That's just the chimney.
Putting in a chimney. Again, here's the existing house side by side with the neighboring houses and our revised aesthetic design, you know, to to look at the actual current context versus the revised proposed. Again, here's the existing with the the new roofline overlaid on it, so we could see how that feels with the with the neighborhood. Mr. Chairman, we still have quite a bit to get through. I'll happy to to keep going on, I I for for a project that we're you know, feeling some some comments on perhaps it would, there's a time to break and and if there are questions from the board to the extent that there are opportunities to revise things, it's always good to to hear some of the things that the board or 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 anyone is thinking, rather than just to to plow through. But which which I'd be happy to do, but I don't, certainly, we're not going to get to all of it material wise and and your thoughts on it this evening.
Well, in that context, as far as the design, whether it's the darker one or the lighter one. I mean, I'm, it's not, in my my feeling is that's truly up to you, your team, Mr. Kennedy. But quite frankly, I think it's it's really something that HPC would would, I would respect their views of it, because I think it's valid that this needs to fit into the context of the existing neighborhood, so I'm not going to comment on whether it's a flat roof or a pitched roof, I'm going to leave that to the HPC. What concerns me, the biggest thing that concerns me is the fact that this house is twenty nine hundred square feet. The existing is twenty one eighty six. And that's a significant, significant increase in the floor area. And I mean, I understand where it is, I mean, it it adds to the bulk of the house. It's in the rear and it's on the, it's in the third floor, but nonetheless, it again, when you when you look at the adjacent houses to it, they all have pitched roofs, the pitched roofs have, let's call it a minimal amount of floor area in that second floor. And and we've got a house that's thirty percent over the floor area. The maximum allowable floor area. Excuse me, even further than thirty percent, it's over the the allowable of seventeen ninety. Where an existing house, the existing house was twenty one eighty six, this is twenty nine hundred. That's a lot, that's a significant increase, and that concerns me.
Steve, just a quick question, Derek's memo says the existing house is a thousand seven eighty. Is that what it is, or is it the twenty one?
I I think Mr. Cohen had reversed the two numbers, so the the existing house is with proportional F A R below what is permitted, so the 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 twenty two hundred approximate number, that's what, that that's the permitted number versus the existing, it's it.
Okay.
Point, point received, of course.
It's still, it's still the twenty nine, the twenty nine hundred is significantly over the twenty one eighty six. Okay, that that's my concern, and I I don't know, I don't know the justification for that.
Well, well, I I I don't want to shortcut everything, you know, we won't get, but that's, that is very helpful to hear as we, you know, prepare to complete our 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 testimony, which, you know, we have, we we started this evening kind of focused on the design, because that's that's obviously an important element, and whether it fits in is is extremely important. But we will certainly get to that aspect of 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 things in one way or another, but message received.
Okay.
Since it's eleven o'clock, I don't know if the board wants to continue. I know you've got a lot of people, or I believe there are a number of people who are watching. Since the applicant hasn't finished their presentation, I don't know if the board wants to take comment now or what your thoughts are in terms of continuing it to another date.
Well, let's hear from the board members, I I mean. I have no problem continuing, but the other board members, do you want to comment? Do you want to continue tonight? Or would you like to continue this to a later date? Yes, Michael.
You know, we, I say continue it to a later date, we've talked about not going late in the past. When we've sort of broken that rule, I I think we need to you know, hold to some things that we discussed before.
Okay, I I I respect that, I think that makes sense, considering we have a special meeting in between this this meeting and the one on the twenty fifth of May also, so so anyone else here to say anything?
I agree.
Okay. All right, so how, Derek, if we were to continue this, this would get continued to May twenty fifth?
I don't think so. I mean, we have five cases on each of the next meetings, and there's no way we're going to get through this with those five cases, and it's just gonna back everything up, I would. The next available meeting would be in June, would be the twenty second. We'll have to have a special meeting after that to catch up the other cases.
All right. I think quite frankly, it's unavoidable. Michael's right, you know, we've we've, in the past, we've gone far beyond where we had intended to go time wise, and I think in all fairness fairness to the board members, we should adhere to what we talked about. Yeah, so, Mr. Kennedy, if that's really where we're at right now, it's gonna have to be continued until possibly June.
Well, wait, wait, we need to carry to a firm date, otherwise, of course, the applicant can always renotice, but I'm assuming they'd prefer not to, so we need a firm date tonight.
Okay, Derek.
If there's any chance, you know, that we, you know, we we could be well, I I'll say you guys know the schedule, but well, better better than me, though, it's largely my fault with the other applications you've got, but if 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 there's, you know, that that's the next time we are, we can be on, that's the next time, you know, we'll we'll certainly, if it means renoticing, we'll 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 do it if that can be of help, but I I think that's not really the problem here, so. We'll, we'll do it if that can be of help, but I, I think that's not really the problem here. Uh, so, uh. Uh, if you could. The next available. Date certain, um, so that we can, uh, continue.
Be the June twenty-second date.
June twenty-second, okay. Yeah. Hey, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy, that's all we can do right now.
I, I, I understand and, uh, appreciate, um. The board's time and, and I know this is particularly, um. Well, just a busy time with workload and one where you're having special meetings, uh, two months in a row, um, and I, 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 in general, uh, it, this is what it is. Um, but you, you, I'll, I'll thank the board for, um, for having, you know, I, I sit in your shoes in another town, um, and, uh. Special meetings are, are a big deal and to have two of them in a row to try to get your backlog is. Is appreciated from the, from the community here. I know this is not what we're hoping for, for tonight, but. Um, uh, you guys are working as hard as possible you could.
Okay.
Um, Chair, Chairman, come for the benefit of those who are watching tonight and the audience. My understanding is then that, uh, given the lateness of the hour and the fact that the applicant has not finished their presentation. Um. The board is not taking public comment tonight, but it's anticipated that. The public would be able to make their comments at the June twenty-second meeting.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Kennedy has indicated that he, he, uh, wanted to hear additional input from the board. And, uh, so I, I think, uh, you know, we've given him the input, he still has to then consider that. And, um, complete his presentation, then we'll go to the public comment portion and continue on. So everybody who's intended to speak this evening will certainly be allowed to speak at the next. Hearing or whenever we get to the public portion comment.
I, I just would say, Steve, I'm, I'm not sure that all the board has given the input. I, I don't assume that.
Well, that's true, only.
You know.
Oh, no, no, you're right. No, you're right. I mean, we haven't.
You know.
I mean, you, you've commented, I've commented, you know, we've had a few other comments and the other board members. I mean, if you want, if, if they'd like to say something now, that's fine or wait, that's fine also.
Yeah. I just didn't want to give miss, you know, Mr. Kennedy or the applicants. You know.
Yeah.
Come to the next meeting and just three, three board members that have, you know.
I, I understood, understood and appreciated, uh, just like with, with HPC, you know, we. You know, we always try, we hear as much as we can hear so that we can adapt and, and have a product that is, is. Something the board can like. So obviously, we, we've heard from a, a few of you this evening. Um, you know, just like we heard from the advisory, uh, HPC, um, on, on this. So, you know, it, look, if anyone wants to. Shout out anything else before the evening is over, we'll certainly take it with us.
I think George Stein indicated that he wanted to say something. Is that right, George?
Yeah, I have some, some points, but I'd like to push them to the next meeting.
Please speak up. I can't, I can't hear you.
All right, I, yeah, I have some questions and comments, which I'd like to bring up at the next meeting. So. Michael, I, I thank you for raising that issue of.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll just, yeah. I'll just. Go ahead.
Wait, who, who is that? Jim?
Jim.
Jim or he? We are, we are combating each other by accident. Um, I mean, I have comments I'll save for later, but I do, the, the floor ratio, uh, and the size, the new size of the building is. Probably my, my biggest concern, um, at this point. Um, I also think it probably happens some time to have an engineer look at that foundation and how you're going to. Cut all those new will, all those new windows into those old walls would probably be worth looking into as well.
Yeah, good point.
To, I was going to say, to the extent that we are. And I'm not entirely clear to the extent that we're responsible to adhere to the. You know, neighborhood. Yeah, conforming to the neighborhood. I, I, it's just hard for me to see what you have, even with the new little pointy roof. It conforming to the rest of the neighborhood. It's, it's that, that's not. It's not getting there as far as I'm concerned, but I, I'm. I'm speaking cautiously because I know that design is not, is not entirely what we're responsible for here. Um, the floor area ratio also does. Seem to be a big, you know, difference to me, so.
Yeah.
Um, I did, I did want to know, I, I guess, it, it, when it was said earlier that the. Um. You're saving or keeping the existing walls, I wasn't clear whether that meant. You're keeping them where they are, you're actually using the same. Material and punching holes and for the windows that, I mean, maybe that's not our concern either, except that we. Wanted to work structurally and not fall down, so. But what does, what did that mean? Actually saving those?
Yeah, we were going to actually try to save the existing temper as much as we could. And, you know, you can cut and restructure. The exterior walls as needed to put new windows.
I guess we can, we can go on and on. Have you, have you, have you done any intrusive investigates?
Well, we've done numerous houses like this.
Now, have you opened this, these walls? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, we've, no, no, not these walls, no, no, we have.
So you, you're not sure what's behind those walls?
Right. But the intention is. To keep them as much as we can.
Yes, I understand that. I was, yeah, we all know about rehab too, and which you can discover.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's that.
I, I have a quick question. Is, is there an existing garage now?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Me, me, thank you. Every.
Thank you.
Every little tidbit is, is very helpful for us. So I, I thank everything that everyone has said.
Okay.
Good.
Steve?
Well, I guess we've heard all the comments. And, um, if there are no more, no more comments, then, uh. We'll continue this application to June and, um, adjourn the meeting for the evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, George, did you want to say something?
I, I was waving goodbye, but I do have some comments for June twenty-fifth.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, June.
What?
No more noticing, right? The case is carried.
Correct.
Twenty-second.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you very much.